Hi, everyone.
Hi, Scott.
Hi.
Like we're waiting for George.
George, George said that he was unable to come. So I believe Laura was going to be taking his place. And she's had some difficulty getting in because initially we were locked out.
Yep, we had that same problem.
Yeah, so she just said that I will go out and go back in. So I think we're still holding on.
I just let Laura in. She should be okay.
Oh, excellent. Okay.
All right, then I think we can get started. We have the three board members of the Finance Committee. Obviously, Laura, you're subbing for George. I'll just turn it over to Jennifer and Kevin to go through the audit results. And I'm gonna kind of run this, run their screens for him. So Jennifer, just tell me what you're gonna start with.
Okay, yep, you can go ahead and move it to slide number one. And I know it looked like we've got six o'clock, another committee meeting going, so we'll go ahead and get moving. Our plan was to cover the graph presentation and the overview of the audit results. And then, time permitting, we can get into a little bit more detail and then hopefully have time for questions as well. Looks like the screen is pulling up. So if you want to go to the next slide for the overview. So we did recently issue and finalize the audit for the 2019-2020 school year. We wanted to go through the results of the audit. And then I plan to cover a little bit with regards to just the current state of public funding and the environment that we're functioning in. So as it relates to the audit results, we have provided you with three deliverables today. And that's what we'll mention to the to the board as well. The first are the basic financial statements. That's labeled financial reports. You should have that. The federal programs audit. And then the letter entitled Report to the Board of Education. So within these three documents, it really provides the results of the audit. And for the basic financial statements, we have issued an unmodified opinion. The same holds true for the federal programs that we tested. We tested the child nutrition cluster and Title I this year. And for both of those programs, we issued unmodified opinions. And unmodified means clean opinion. That's the highest form of assurance that we can provide that the financial information and the federal programs that we tested are fairly presented. And on the federal program side, in accordance with the compliance regulations associated with those. And as a result, in the federal program side, we did not have any findings or question costs. We also did perform an audit, if you will. It's not a separate report, but it is incorporated into the financial statements, a comment on the compliance with your bond programs. So we do select transactions and look at that in compliance with the bond regulations for the state code, as well as your ballot language, and make sure that there were no issues. We did not identify any issues with regards to those transactions either. So overall, clean report, no findings, no question costs, unmodified opinion. So that's an outstanding accomplishment. It is no secret to anyone that this pandemic that we are experiencing has impacted just so many different aspects of our life. From an audit perspective and from a funding perspective, I thought I would just comment a little bit on the current environment just to provide some additional perspective in addition to what you might already read and hear about. There is detailed information in the Report to the Board of Education in the informational section that provides some commentary on the different programs that I'll mention. So that's there for you as a resource. But I would just wanted to comment on a few things that will just continue to impact really the immediate term financial picture, if nothing else. So first is, you know, you really ended the year with uncertainty. So at June 30th, 2020, it was uncertain the impact of the pandemic on the state of Michigan. As a result, in August, when your final state aid payment for the year for fiscal '20 came in, the district was prorated $175 per pupil. And that did impact your fiscal '20 state revenue. Additionally, when you approved your budget for fiscal '21, it again was unclear what the impact of the pandemic would be. Most school districts assumed that there could be a $600 to $700 per pupil cut in the foundation. The result came in much more favorable to what was expected, which is good news, but also provides continued challenges as well because it is still early and to see if that will hold true. But what ultimately was adopted by the state is that school districts will essentially have a flat foundation allowance. So you won't get back that $175 per pupil that you lost, that has been prorated and gone. But your foundation allowance will stay the same as it was last year before that cut. So that's positive in the sense that you won't be cut. But it's also presents a challenge because, as we know, the foundation allowance is already maybe not as high as it should be in the eyes of many. And so that does continue to put financial restraints on. On the offset, though, the federal government did step in and provide some relief to businesses, to governments. And the federal funding that really impacts the school districts is really coming through the Families First Act and the CARES Act. And the two federal programs that you'll benefit from probably most significantly is referred to as the Coronavirus Relief Funds, or CRF funds. And ESER is the other grant. So these are federal programs. They will be subjected to the single audit, federal programs testing for fiscal '21 for you. But what the Coronavirus Relief Funds provided was you receive that cash in August, about $5.7 million for you to determine how to spend related to, you know, helping you get through this pandemic time. And you'll receive about $1.2 million of ESER funding. And so that, again, provides some relief to offset the fact that your foundation allowance is going to remain the same going into fiscal '21. So there's a lot going on in the funding picture, continuing to stay abreast of what's out there and what challenges there are, what strings there are attached to these funds will be important as that continues to evolve. And I know that Scott and Danielle have been really great about asking questions and making sure that they're staying on top of the different guidance that's released to make sure that that is being spent appropriately. So that kind of provides the overall picture, if you will, of just the status of the funding picture and the economy. So now we'll flip over to, you know, the historical results, if you will, and go through the specifics for the general fund for the June 30, 2020 year. And this will be the slide presentation that we'll cover with the board as well. So Kevin will walk us through that.
Thanks, Jennifer. Good evening, everyone. So as Jennifer mentioned, I'm just gonna walk through the general fund highlights from the most recent fiscal year ended June 30, 2020. Starting here on Slide 2 is our, the general fund revenue. For the most recent fiscal year ended, total revenue and other financing sources this latest year was approximately $160.4 million. We have that asterisk in there, sort of an annual reminder that of that 160 million, approximately 11.1 million of it is a flow-through from the state for the MIPSers rate stabilization. So it's $11 million that the district has. No say over. It just comes in and it goes out. So just kind of bearing in mind with that total number. Of your total revenue and financing sources, state aid membership makes up about three quarters of that, with the other quarter being property taxes, other state, local, and inter-district sources, and your federal grant dollars in the general fund. The next slide we have is a year-over-year comparison of general fund revenue. So from 2019 to 2020, you'll notice that there was approximately $4 million less in revenue year-over-year. However, much of that was made or is due to the Manthe site acquisition and the way that was accounted for last year. So that acquisition was approximately $3 to $4 million and constitutes the largest reason for the difference year-over-year. If you take that piece out, total state membership aid actually was about 75.1% without that acquisition component. And so there's a year-over-year decrease in the state revenue, state membership aid of about 1.4%. So we can move on to the next slide, which is your general fund expenditures for this most recent fiscal year ended. Total expenditures and other financing uses for this most recent year ended was approximately $160 million. And again, of that number, $11 million was from that MIPSers rate stabilization flow-through. The way those expenditures were allocated this year, approximately 79% went to instruction and instructional support. So that's what we consider your in-classroom dollars, dollars that directly educate students. The other 21% goes to school and general administration and business services, operation maintenance, central and transportation, and then a small component of transfers out of the general fund. Our next slide is the sort of same comparison on the expenditure side year-over-year. So again, with the way the Manthe property acquisition was accounted for last year, that constitutes the difference year-over-year in general fund expenditures from $163 million to 160 in the current year. If we take away that acquisition piece of the pie and how it kind of affected last year's allocation of expenditures, the instruction and instructional support services was 78.5% without that acquisition. So year-over-year, there was approximately a half percent increase to instruction and instructional support services. Our next slide, we look at general fund expenditures for the district, but we compare it to the statewide percentage of all Michigan districts. The small caveat on this slide is that the Michigan district's information comes from last year as that's the most recent year that's available to us. So you'll notice that the district's allocation of instruction and instructional support services is about 5% higher than the statewide average for all Michigan districts. So we kind of put those two together, our revenues and expenditures, and we kind of look at that effect on fund balance. So the beginning fund balance as of July 1, 2019 was $29.7 million. There was an excess of revenues over expenditures this year of $275,000, which resulted in an ending fund balance of approximately $30 million. One of the key metrics related to fund balance is that fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. So that ratio this year was 18.72%, and last year was 18.2%. We like to look at fund balance as it relates to days of operations. So to put it in another way, if there was no additional income coming into the district, how long could the district operate? And as of June 30, 2020, that number would have been approximately 68 days. The next slide we have is just a historical look back at general fund balance. You'll notice over the last 10 years, the district has been able to increase its fund balance year-over-year. The 2021 projected amount is based on the most recently adopted budget back in June, as Jennifer mentioned, when things were a lot less certain. There was a lot more unknowns. So that decrease was projected to be about $3 million. The next chart is the general fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. And you'll notice that as the district has been able to add to its fund balance over time in the last five years or so, as expenditures have increased, it's kind of flattened that ratio out. So between 2017 and 2020, the change in that fund balance as a percentage of expenditures was only about 1% difference. And again, with the most recently adopted budget, if we were to project into 2021, that fund balance as a percentage of expenditures would be about 16%. Our next slide is the general fund balance as a percentage of expenditures for Macomb County districts. And this data is a look back into June 30 of 2019, which is the most recent year we have data. My apologies if you can hear my children. The statewide average this last year, back in 2019, was 14.2%. And Chippewa Valley's fund balance as a percentage of expenditures was that 18.3%. The last slide we have here is the foundation allowance per pupil for Macomb County districts. So you notice as you look at this that Chippewa Valley kind of sits in this bucket of lowest-funded districts in the county at $8,111. The statewide average is a little bit more at $8,362, sitting kind of right there in the middle. Over the last several years, the state has been sort of making an attempt in closing the gap between the highest and lowest-funded districts using that 2X formula. And I believe that the future hope is to keep that trend ongoing. And so that kind of concludes all the slides that we have presented for you today. If at this point there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. Or I know it looks like we have about 10 to 13 more minutes to cover some of the other information in the packets that we've provided.
One thing I did wanna mention about this year as well that isn't really reflected in the slides because we do focus on the general fund is the implementation of GASB-84. And we spoke about this last year as an upcoming accounting pronouncement. And that's the accounting pronouncement related to the fiduciary activities. So funds that were previously accounted for, like the student groups and school accounts to a large degree, would have been housed in that fiduciary fund previously. In the financial statements that you have now, that standard has been implemented. And so what's happened is there's a new special revenue fund. So it's under the umbrella of the governmental funds is this new special revenue fund for student activities being reflected there. So there is a call-out in the opinion letter with regards to this implementation. And beginning fund balance gets restated. So looking at it as if that was always part of the governmental funds. So when you see that reference to restated fund balance, that's specifically what that relates to. But I did want to mention that as one of the more significant changes in the financial statements.
Which one do you want to go to next, Jennifer?
Um, let's see. Good question. So I think we really covered the highlights of the Report to the Board of Education. So like I said, that's really intended to be a reference to you as well in the informational items. So I don't think that there's anything, you know, in detail we need to cover. But I did want to just pause and ask if there's any questions with regards to that new standard I mentioned or the different funding mechanisms that are coming through, if you'd like me to elaborate on any of that. No? Okay. In the financial report, Scott, if you are able to pull that up, why don't we go, it'll probably be around page 38 or so of the PDF. It's the numbered page 37.
We just lost it.
We probably go too fast. I think if you, you might be able to jump to it if you just type in where the number is. Like you could try to jump to page.
Yeah, I lost it. I'll try and get it.
Financial statements vanished. If you have access to the electronic version, I was gonna point that out to being the, that's the general fund budget to actual page. That's just, I think, a helpful page to look at to understand some of the different categories of the expenditures and just where that came in compared to where you thought it was going to be when you adopted that final budget in June. And I think one of the things, and you're not alone in this variance that you see, for example, in the state revenue sources with that variance of $7 million. So that is really where, going into June, the best information available to you was that there was likely to be a very significant proration of the state foundation allowance. And so the fact that it came in at $175 per pupil is still very significant, but it wasn't as significant as what was expected. And so that's why you see a very positive variance to what you expected from a final budget perspective. And then that's really the largest component of why you thought going into June 30, you might dip into your fund balance of about $8.8 million, where essentially you broke even. Because if you factor in that difference in that assumption, that's the primary difference. So this variance probably looks much larger than what you're used to seeing. But once you factor in that state proration issue, and like I said, you're not alone in that. Most districts had assumed about a $6 to $700 per pupil cut there as well.
So Jennifer, can you see my screen?
I can. Yep. Yep, that looks good. Since you're there, Scott, if you could advance, like towards the end, we could highlight that new student activities fund. Be like page 46 of the page numbered. So go down like two more pages. That's the balance sheet side. Can look at the income statement side. Yep, that looks good. So that fourth column over that you're seeing on the screen, so that is this new special revenue fund. And so in the past, you would have seen a balance sheet related to that. You would have seen the cash that that fund holds and then due to student groups. So now you're seeing the revenue and expenditure activity, which is about equal. So the money that is... Okay, sorry. Somebody muted me. Then the money that's collected is about the same as then what's expended in that fund. But one of the new requirements of the standard was to present the revenue and expenses along with the balance sheet. So we did just want to point that out to you. And I think it's worth mentioning, too, that related to the adoption of this standard, we did do some additional procedures around the implementation of that, how you brought over that activity, because it is different in terms of what's being reported. One of the exercises that we went through was to essentially do a proof of cash, if you will, and in our terms, that's seeing if we can validate the amount that's recorded as revenue and expenditures based on the amount of cash activity that came in because you'd expect collections to equal your revenue approximately. And, you know, dispersments or checks written to be your expenses. So we did some procedures around that just to validate since this fund is new and the reporting is new associated with it. But from a highlights perspective, you know, that pretty much covers it. We do wanna thank Scott and his team. As you all know, things have been turned upside down in a lot of different ways. And so our audit was performed remotely this time. And so we worked collaboratively with Danielle and Casey and the business office to be able to effectively transfer documents electronically and did Microsoft Teams meetings every day to make sure that we were connecting on questions. And so we do appreciate just the ability to be able to still perform a very successful audit from our perspective under those circumstances. Anything else to add, Scott, that I missed or?
I think you mentioned it towards the end. I think as difficult of a year as this has been, what went on between us and you was pretty phenomenal considering we weren't allowed to get together, which is our normal practice of shuffling a lot of papers back and forth and looking at a lot of things. We managed to do it electronically and it worked, I think, fairly well. So I mean, kudos to Danielle and everyone else who really did a wonderful job with this. It was very difficult to do this and it went off, I think, really well.
Absolutely. I would totally echo that, and being in the day-to-day with Danielle and the team and Casey as well, they did a great job for something that was kind of thrust upon us and we didn't have too much of an option. So we sincerely appreciate it.
All right. Are there any other questions from the board? All right, that should conclude our Finance Committee meeting. So thank you, Jennifer and Kevin, for coming. And we will start our Building Insights Committee meeting in about three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeff. Do you need to share your screen tonight?
No, I think Scott's going to help me out with that.
Okay.
Thanks, Reckon.
I will turn it back over to you, Scott. I stole it back for a minute there.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey, Frank. Looks like we have everyone, so I think we can get this started.
Is Laura on?
Yeah, Laura's on.
Okay, I just couldn't see her. Sorry. Okay.
All right.
Can everybody else see me?
Yep.
I can't for some reason. Why can't I?
Why don't you scroll down, Denise?
That's what I'm doing. There you are. Okay, cool. I lose somebody every time I scroll down. Hi, Laura. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
All right, we're going to get started and I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Atkins for a review of the water bottle fill station bid. And I think I'm going to pull it up. Here it is. I hope you can see that.
Just scroll down one more line. Perfect. All right. Well, thank you, Scott, and thank you for letting us present tonight. So the water bottle fill stations was originally part of the bond program. We are actually fast tracking this project due to COVID. We tried to pull this up about six months. Originally, a lot of this work was going to happen in over the summer of 21. We're going to try to start this in January and install as many as we can to try to get these in place. They do have a long lead time and we will have to work on second shift. So we can only move so fast, but we thought this was important to pull forward. So we took bids on October 8th. We got four bids for mechanical, three for electrical. The electrical work is just to disconnect and reconnect them. That was pretty straightforward. And Shoreview's done a lot of good work with us in the district. The mechanical portion of it, though, was a little bit more tricky. The low bidder contrast mechanical, who's done a lot of great work for the district, is actually the service person for the district, actually didn't include all of the water bottle fill stations. This project includes 54 water bottle fill stations and they only included 47 with their bid. And they actually provided a couple of different options for what they did include. So we couldn't consider their bid complete to have an apples to apples comparison. But Watson Brothers, who's done a lot of work for us in the past, hasn't done much work recently for us, but it's done a lot of good work for them. I've been working with them for 20 plus years. They did have a complete scope of work that met the plans and specs from Wachley Associates. So our recommendation, which you'll see on the board motion tonight, because we are fast tracking it, is going to be for both Watson Brothers and Shoreview Electric. And when you add that up and do the math on it, this product is about $22,000 under budget. That bid savings you see on the spreadsheet includes the card access, which I'll talk about in just a second. The only thing to note on this is the only ones that aren't included in this is Erie and Mohawk. Those two buildings already had some water bottle fill stations and they did want to add one, but they wanted to add one in a location that we don't currently have a drinking fountain. So it's going to take quite a bit more work to bust up the block, bust up the floor and run power to those locations. And it was going to be very cost efficient to do that as a standalone project. They have a mason come in just for one day to do that kind of stuff. Didn't make a lot of sense. So we're bumping those two buildings to be done with the bulk work that we're going to be doing next summer. Since we couldn't get all of them done anyways in one over the school year, it just made sense to bump those two since they already had some in their buildings. They weren't really missing or going to be go out. So those are the only two that'll be taken care of at a later date. Any questions on the water bottle fill stations before I jump to access control?
Yes, is Watson Brothers a union company?
You know, I believe they are. They're on the port here on area. I would have to double check to make sure that they are.
What was the question?
If Watson Brothers is a union company. I know that the low bidder contrast was not a union, but I do believe that Watson is union. And I don't know what the other two SD mechanical or cross construction is a general contractor. They just, that's why their number, I don't know what cross construction was looking at or bidding on the job. Doesn't make any sense why their number is so much higher than everybody else's.
Um, I was going to ask, do I have my? So you said, mentioned that Mohawk already had two in your building. So what is there? How many are we putting in buildings? How is that determined?
So what we did is we contacted all the principals and asked them where they wanted. We originally identified, I think we had three of the budget, a few more at the two high school buildings, is what we originally budgeted for when the bond issue was our bond application was put together. So we contacted them over the past and that again, this, those numbers were put together back in 2016, back when we did the original bond program. Since then, a lot of the schools have worked with their PTOs or other funds, maybe athletic boosters. They've installed some of their own. So their requests came in to be less than those three. That's why in the case of a Mohawk and Erie, they didn't need one right away because they'd already installed some probably using some PTO or internal building accounts. So we'll be able to redeploy those dollars to something else in their building later on.
Okay, and are they going to get? Sorry, are they going to get like, are the kids getting bottles or anything, or do they just have to bring their own?
I would assume it'd be a bring your own. This bid doesn't include any.
Okay. No, they don't. Okay, thanks, Scott.
So on on the access control, I just want to give you a heads up. Originally, we were going to plan to award that also tonight, but we have almost the same type of discrepancy there. The two low bidders, if you look at Advanced Building Group and Technology Partners, they're about seven grand or something apart from each other. They're pretty much neck and neck on this. Advanced Building Group has partnered with ROK, who has done a lot of your access control throughout the district. So we're very comfortable. They've got a competent crew that can do the work. Technology Partners is a different company. We haven't worked with them before, so we're checking their references. But they do work with your current system. Your current system is an S2 product and they are a authorized supplier for that. It does appear that Technology Partners did include some additional parts and components that are necessary to make this work, that Advanced Building Group did not include. It's tough to say it's incomplete or not. It's kind of that gray fuzzy area. It's the the actual pieces that plug in for expansion. And we don't believe that we got enough expansion built into our current system. So we're taking a little more time to do a little due diligence to see what we really need. We did include, you know, pricing with this bid for those additional things that we didn't know about. But those additional components could be upwards of $30,000. So before we wanted to bring one of these to you with a potential $30,000 change over at the later date, we definitely wanted to go through and do a little more due diligence on this and make sure that we're recommending the the company's lowest. The labor rates are slightly different between the two. The unit pricing is slightly different. So we're trying to figure out what makes the most sense for you. So there's a little more to come on that. But we've got two bidders and roughly we're about 50 grand under budget on that. So we're in very good shape on that overall. When the process was similar there, we went to the principals. We told them they had five to put in at their discretion. And they came back and they gave us the locations of where they wanted to add those spots. Any questions on that? Well, if you're good with both of those. I know, Scott, you've got something else on your agenda you wanted to cover.
I do. The results from the AED bid. Let me get to it. So purchasing department bid out the AEDs. Basically, what they were looking at doing is upgrading and replacing 44 of our 58 AEDs to get them in compliance with the FDA regulations. And you can see based upon the multiple bids that we received, the low bid is Aventrick Technologies. And their low bid is about $33,595. We would be recommending that we award this bid to them based upon them being the lowest qualified bid. And this bid will be looked at for approval from the board in the next board meeting. So that would be, where is that? The second of November, I believe. So it was pretty straightforward. Advantrick Technologies met all bid specifications. And again, this is a, this was a fairly easy one to recommend based upon their bid. And we dealt with Aventrick, Aventrick Technologies multiple times over the years. So this is something that we're really confident in their abilities to perform in this bid.
How soon will they be installed or upgraded or whatever?
I believe the, our hope is to have them in before the end of November, I believe.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
And if I can, Laura, to get back to your question, Watson Brothers is a union shop. I just verified that.
All right. If there are no other questions, that is all I have on the agenda for.
Yeah, just how about the batteries on those AEDs? It seems to be the most, everything that's got to be replaced as far as maintenance, it's just the batteries manually. Is there a difference in battery pricing on some of those?
From my understanding, not really. And the the batteries, that's one of the ways that we work with Aventrick is they also service our equipment. So we have a maintenance agreement with them that with these AEDs, if they are low on battery, it notifies us via email. And it will tell us, you know, if if a battery is low. And then typically what we'll do is we'll we'll replace them based upon the information that we receive from the actual unit. So that's one of the components that we actually like about these types of AEDs that, you know, that they will notify us when there is an issue versus us having to go in and verify and check it multiple times over the year to make sure that, you know, a battery isn't low or things like that. But yeah, like any other technology, batteries are part of this. It's a maintenance cost, no different than computers or anything like that. So but for the most part, all the batteries are very similar in price, is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other questions about the two bids? All right. Again, one of them, the water bottle, water bottle fill stations is going to come to the board tonight. And the AED and the door access system will come to you guys, come to the full board next board meeting, which I believe is November 2nd.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. Well, we have about 17 minutes before the board meeting, so.
See you then.
Go eat if you can. See ya.
Bye.
See you later.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Okay. Good. Okay. We will call to order the Chicago High School's Board of Education meeting for October 19th, 2020 at 6:30. We will waive the fledge this evening. We want to item B additions and deletions. There is none for this evening. We want to see recognition presentations, Mr. Roberts.
You're muted, Ron. That, that was a great opening too. I'm sorry and no one heard it. I don't know if I could recreate that. Anyways, I'll try. We have a couple of presentations this evening. We have Plant Moran, who was here to present our audit, our financial audit for the past school year. And we have Ms. Jennifer Chambers and Mr. Kevin Terra Tudo. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Chambers and you may start.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good. Well, thank you to the Board of Education for having us here tonight in order to present the results of your June 30th, 2020 audit. Before we provide an overview of the financial results, I wanted to discuss the deliverables that you received in the board packets related to the audit. You should have received three items in the board packet from us. The basic financial statements, which is labeled financial report, the federal programs audit, and the letter entitled Report to the Board of Education. As it relates to the first deliverable, the financial report, we have performed the audit of the district's financial statements in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and in accordance with government auditing standards. As a result of our audit, we have issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest form of assurance that we can provide that the district's financial statements are fairly presented. Also included in the financial report is a footnote describing that the district was subjected to the bond compliance requirements and our audit procedures included an evaluation of those requirements. We did not identify any compliance issues with the costs that we selected for testing under the bond program. Also, within the opinion to the financial statements, I did want to highlight that there is reference to the implementation of GASB 84, which resulted in student activities that were previously considered outside of the governmental funds or they were accounted for in the fiduciary fund. These are now included as a new special revenue fund. And so you will see that difference in presentation with the implementation of that standard. As it relates to the second item I mentioned, the federal programs audit, this is a separate audit performed over the district's federal grants received. It is compliance-based and it is intended to evaluate whether the grants we've selected for testing complies with the federal program rules. This year, we selected the child nutrition cluster and Title I for testing. We have issued an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on those federal programs. And there were no findings or question costs in complying with the federal requirements, which is an outstanding accomplishment. The final deliverable that I wanted to touch on briefly is the one entitled Report to the Board of Education. This outlines required post-audit communication and also includes several informational items for your review and consideration. One of the primary items that we wanted to touch on is the current state of public education funding. It is well known that the impact of this global pandemic is significant in many different realms of our life. From a K-12 funding perspective, you were and continue to be impacted by changes in the funding landscape. For the fiscal year 2020, the one that we're talking about here tonight, late into the fiscal year, actually after the fiscal year ended in August, the district received a proration or a cut of $175 per pupil in state funding. This was about a $2.7 million impact that reduced the funding that the district was anticipating in your state revenue. And we'll talk a little bit about that when we cover the financial results. Also going into fiscal 21, the current year that you're operating in, the state budget was recently adopted. But going into that, when you had to adopt your original budget in June for fiscal 21, it was very uncertain in terms of what the true economic impact to the state was going to be of this pandemic. It still is fairly unknown as it continues. But the results early on to what the state adopted in its budget is more favorable than what was originally anticipated. So this is good news to some extent because it means that from a school district perspective, you will not be subjected, at least right now, to further reductions in your foundation allowance. Although you will be experiencing a flat foundation allowance as it relates to what you received last year. So while it's good news, it also continues to present some challenges because you rely heavily on your state revenue. And to not receive any increase does provide challenges. You will receive, however, a one-time $65 per pupil payment from the state. This flat revenue stream from the state will be partially offset by additional federal funding that was enacted. And this is specifically related to the Families First Response Act and the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, which is often referred to as CARES. So there are two programs that are really pretty impactful to school districts as it relates to these acts. One is the Coronavirus Relief Funds or CRF. The district has received about $5.7 million for funding related to that to be spent in the current fiscal year. In addition, there's also a grant referred to as ESSER and the district will receive about $1.2 million with regards to that. It's important to highlight though that this is federal funding. It will be subjected to the single audit or that federal program audit that we talked about. And as a result, we just encourage the district to And as a result, we just encourage the district to stay connected to the different guidelines and rules associated with how to spend these federal funds. I do want to congratulate the district, Mr. Sederland and his staff on a successful and smooth audit in this very challenging year. The district demonstrated continued focus on integrity and accountability in financial reporting and receiving unmodified opinions with no findings is something to be proud of. I will now turn it over to Kevin. He's going to go through an overview of the financial results.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, as she mentioned, I'm going to cover the financial results for this most recent fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020, primarily in the general fund as the district's main operating fund. So the first slide you have in front of you is the general fund revenue for this most recent fiscal year ended. Total revenue and other financing sources of the district was approximately 160.5 million. And of that amount, you'll see a little asterisk just as a sort of annual reminder that of that 160 million, about 11 million of that comes through from the state for the MIPS' rate stabilization flow-through. So that 11 million dollars is money that flows into the district in which they have no, no say over. It just immediately goes back out. And so you'll see that on both the revenue and expenditure side. Of your revenue for the year, approximately three quarters of that is made up of your state membership aid. The remaining pieces come from property taxes at about 8%, your other state, local and intra-district sources at about 14% and then federal grant dollars at about 3%. The next slide is looking at the general fund revenue for the years ended June 30th, 2020 and last year, June 30th, 2019. So you noticed year over year, uh, there was approximately a $4 million decrease in total revenue sources. However, with that amount, something to bear in mind is that last year, the district acquired a Manthe property. And so the way that the accounting for that works is that acquisition resulted in about a $4 million source of revenue, one-time source of revenue at that time. So year over year, without, if we take away that Manthe piece, your total general fund revenue is right about $160 million for both years. If we look at the way revenue has been allocated year over year, that acquisition in the prior year did have an impact on sort of the pieces of the pie, as you'll see there. If we take that away, your state membership aid was about 75.1%. So there was actually a decrease in total state membership aid of about 1.4% year over year. Moving on to expenditures of the general fund for the year ended June 30th, 2020, total expenditures and other financing uses for this most recent year end was approximately 160.2 million dollars. Again, of that amount, 11 millions relates to that MIPS' stabilization flow-through. The way the district has allocated those expenditures for this year, the largest piece of that is in instruction and instructional support. So that's your in-classroom dollars, what we like to call direct sort of educating dollars for children. Uh, that makes up about 79% of total expenditures out of the district. The remaining 21% comes from school, school in general, administration and business services, operations, maintenance, central and transportation, and then a small component of transfers out of the general fund to other funds. If we look at general fund expenditures year over year for June 30th, 2020 and 2019, you'll kind of notice the same trend year over year. There was a decrease from 2019 to 2020 of about $3 million. Again, the largest component of that was the way the Manthe property acquisition is handled under governmental accounting. And so that would be probably the largest factor in the change year over year. And again, it does have an impact to the way the pieces of the pie for expenditures does report. So you'll see that the Manthe property acquisition in 2019 was 2.37%. If we take that piece out, uh, total instruction and instructional support services is actually right around 78 and a half percent. So the district did add or did increase their instruction and instructional support service dollars year over year by about half a percent. And then we also like to look at the general fund expenditures for the district as well against the statewide percentage of all Michigan districts. So you can see here on this chart that Chippewa Valley Schools, their level of instruction and instructional support services at 79% is about 5% greater than the statewide percentage of all Michigan districts. Uh, the caveat with this slide, just kind of to keep you informed, is that this is information from last year for this total state of Michigan, but we have found that, uh, these pieces of the pie don't change significantly year over year. So we kind of put revenues and expenditures together to bring to you a summary of the general fund balance uh, for this most recent year ended. So as of July 1st, 2019, beginning fund balance was approximately 20, 29.7 million dollars. There was an excess of revenues over expenditures of $275,000, bringing the ending fund balance to right around $30 million. One of the key ratios that is looked at for general fund balance is that fund balance as a percent of expenditures. So that ratio this year is 18.72% and last year was 18.2%. To put another way, it would be if we were to consider that no new sources of revenue were coming in to the district, how long could the district operate, uh, just based on its available sources? Uh, and that would, that number is about 68 days as of June 30th, 2020. So this next graph here is just a historical look back at general fund balance through the last 10 years as well as the district's projection for the 2021 fund balance. So over the last 10 years, uh, as you can see, there's a small increase year over year to the general fund fund balance, uh, starting right around 2012. With the most recently adopted budget back in June, the district was projecting about a $3 million usage of fund balance for 2021. And as Jennifer had mentioned, a lot of that was due to the uncertainty surrounding school funding at that time. The next slide we have is looking at that key ratio, the general fund balance as a percentage of expenditures for the years ended June 30th, 2011 through our most recent year ended. You'll see that that, uh, ratio has increased year over year beginning 2012. However, as the district's expenditures have increased, the ratio has remained relatively flat the last few years. So between 2017 and 2020, general fund balance as a percentage of expenditures has really only changed about 1%. And again, as we look forward into the most recently adopted budget, where the district had kind of budgeted their ending to be in 2021 would bring that percentage down to 16%. Our next slide is we look at the general fund fund balance as a percentage of expenditures for all of McComb County districts. So down towards the bottom, you'll notice Chippewa Valley highlighted in orange. That was what we had mentioned. And I should say that this slide is as of June 30th, 2019, so last year's results. Just because the McComb County District, this is the most recently available information that we have. So 18.3% for the district. Uh, the statewide average here is 14.2 as of June 30th, 2019. And then the next slide we have, we just look at the foundation allowance per pupil for all of McComb County districts for this most recent fiscal year ended. Uh, you'll notice towards the bottom, Chippewa Valley, again, highlighted in orange. It sits in that bucket of sort of least funded districts in the county at $8,111 per pupil. The statewide average there, right in the middle in that teal color, is $8,362 per pupil. So over the last few years, the state has tried to close the gap between the highest and lowest funded districts using a 2X formula. And while there's still certainly uncertainty into the future of school district funding, I believe it is the hope of the state to kind of continue that trend as well.
Yep, and and just to piggyback off of Kevin's comments, as I mentioned at the beginning, with your foundation allowance per pupil holding flat into 2021, you'll continue to be at that $8,111 per pupil level. And as we identified, while the district does have a solid fund balance and you have been able to achieve really great things being at the lowest funded, particularly in the county. Certainly, if you were to be able to achieve the statewide average, for example, of foundation allowance per pupil, you would be able to do a lot more. So at that lower level funding, you're doing a lot with less. And, um, you know, just hoping that at some point in time, the state will equalize that to be able to allow you to do that much more if you were to be able to have a greater funding per pupil from the state.
And that sort of, that does conclude our presentation as well for this evening.
Yep. So at this point in time, um, we'd welcome any, you know, questions or comments from, from the board. I'm happy to, to answer any questions that you have.
Hi, this is Denise Aquino. With the, uh, I thought that the state was giving a $60 increase that didn't go through. Is that true?
Yeah, so you will receive $65 per pupil. It's, it's considered a one-time funding, though. So it's just important to distinguish that that's not going into your base foundation so that 8,111 stays the same and you get this one-time source of $65 per pupil.
Okay, so based on, so you look just after June 30th, you're not looking into the future into what our expenditures are versus our revenue, correct?
What we, what we did is looked at what you adopted in your budget as of June 30, in that kind of original budget for fiscal 21. That, that is what we presented a few slides prior in terms of what at that point in time your projected fund balance would be under those circumstances. But that was, that was in advance of the state adopting the budget that it ultimately did.
I just want to thank the business office and its leadership, Scott. It, it's amazing what we're, have been able to do and thank our employees who have taken many cuts and/or years of no raises and whatnot for us to be able to achieve this. And I just want to say thanks and a great job to all of, all of those people. Thank you.
Other questions by the board? Okay, hearing none. Thank you again for your presentation this evening. And yes, thanks to our administration and our employees for helping us get to this financial position in Chippewa Valley Schools. Again, uh, one of the lowest funded districts in the state, fifth biggest, might add, and having a 18% fund equity is, uh, it's a stubborn in this day and age that we'd like to hang our hat on that. That's something that we've been very responsible with community's money, very appreciative of the support. So, thank you. Mr. Roberts, I think we have another presentation this evening.
Sure. This evening, we're going to talk about the return to school plan for, um, our secondary students. At our last board meeting on the, um, uh, the fourth, we presented a comprehensive plan. Tonight, we want to review it because there is a motion tonight to, um, to set a date for that. So we thought we would review it and we thought that would be helpful for, um, our community if they happen to be on the line listening or viewing this evening. Because I know some people want to speak and maybe, um, maybe some of the, um, what's presented will answer those questions for them. And then also as part of that presentation, I will talk about COVID data because I think that's really important as we go forward. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brasky and the Educational Services team will take the initial part of this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, and good evening. Tonight, we'll be reviewing what a transition would look like at the secondary level from the remote learning model that we currently are in to a hybrid learning model. The transition to hybrid instruction began at the elementary level last week and we will continue to monitor its progress. Ms. Licari has a brief update on week one. Marina?
Yes, thank you, Don. So I'm very pleased to share with the board and share with the community that elementary did start their return to school in the hybrid plan on Monday. And, um, I'm not at all surprised because of the hard work that our administrators and our staff members put in to be prepared, but everything went very well. Of course, there have been some adjustments along the way, but our students have proved to be resilient. Our staff members have proved to be resilient and, and our building administrators. But really, everything has gone very well. It has been a transition, of course, uh, to have half the number of students in class or in the school building that you normally would have. But it's also been a great opportunity for our staff members to connect with kids and have those opportunities to really build those relationships that they were building over the computer or via the computer the last few months. But it has really been a great transition. Our schools are rolling with the punches and making adjustments where they see fit and communicating with their families. But I'm really proud and really happy to update the board and the community to let you know that elementary has really done a fantastic job and welcomed their kids back into the building and are excited to have kids back in the building. So of course they're adjusting. Of course they're communicating any adjustments to be made. But nonetheless, they really are doing a fantastic job and embracing this new normal.
Thank you, Marina. Now, pending a decision by the board this evening, the transition to hybrid for middle school and high school will take place. Once a start date is determined, a period of time will be needed to prepare for the return to school. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Sibley, who'll talk to you about the hybrid schedule work for middle school and high school. Paul?
Thank you, Dr. Brasky. Yeah, as Ms. Licari mentioned, we had the elementary students return. I can tell you from a parent standpoint, it was very exciting. My, my two boys got to go back to school and they've had a great first week, so that was, was very enjoyable. So we are excited to talk a little about what the secondary return could look like. You know, last week I did share a lot of this, so I'll repeat some things, but I will go through a little bit quicker this week. Although I want to make sure that the community does hear the plans if they were not part of our meeting last week. So the hybrid plan for the secondary students will look very similar to the elementary as far as how we will identify the students returning. So you can see in this slide, we will have a group A and a group B who will, who will alternate days. Uh, group A will come on Mondays and Wednesdays. Group B will come Tuesdays and Thursdays. And those two groups will alternate Fridays, as you can see on the schedule in front of you. CVVA will continue to stay remote throughout. And as some of you may not realize, our K-12 CLP students also returned when our elementary students did return. So we do have students in our secondary buildings right now. And those are our CLP students who also have had a great return. Our staff has reported that it's gone very well, excited to have the kids back in the buildings, obviously. So right now, our secondary buildings are finalizing some of the AB assignments for students. So at the secondary level, we were actually going through every single section. Uh, what that means is each student at secondary level who has six classes, we are actually looking at every single period of the day at all of our buildings to try to balance out the numbers as best we can in order to minimize the number of students in any one class at any, at any specific time. So we're very proud of the work that our secondary administrators and scheduling coordinators are doing. And they've really worked hard and are continuing to do so to reduce those class sizes. I know last week I was, or two weeks ago now, I was asked about those numbers. And so I can tell you that, you know, we are trying to get our class sizes to 20 or below in all of our secondary classes. In some cases, we are, are right around that 20 mark or 21, but we're looking at every single classroom and its specific layout to make sure that those numbers are minimized. So when you talk about a high school and the thousands of class periods we're talking about, we know, I can use Dakota High School, for example, who's our largest school. Right now, we were trying to reduce our final number of classrooms that were kind of large, you know, meaning that 21 mark. And we only have 15, about 15 sections total that were at that mark. So we're actually doing a very good job of getting those numbers down. So go to the next slide for me. I should mention, as we talk about class sizes, you know, our class sizes in Chippewa Valley are very similar to many districts around us. So 35 is our max. Most of our classes, the secondary level, uh, have run, you know, somewhere between 33, 34 for our, uh, traditional required courses. We do run some classes lower, but this year with the hybrid model, so when we talk about 20, that's a pretty significant difference in class size for all of our secondary teachers. So when we look at the, the back-to-school guidelines, these are things that are on our website. We go through every component of the school day, if you will. Uh, everything from athletics to facilities to cleaning and what Everything from athletics to facilities to cleaning and what those things will look like in our buildings. So if you wanted to see the details of those plans, those are still posted to our website. And those plans continue to get updated as we get updates from the state of Michigan, from the CDC or from the health department. Next slide, please. So facial coverings has been a very, I'll say a hot topic for, for schools, obviously, through the decisions made with local government and what the health department has come in to decide. Facial coverings in Chippewa Valley Schools will be required for all staff and students. They'll be required on the buses as students arrive, as they're dismissed, all indoor activities. We are committed to making them available for students who don't have one. Face shields are not acceptable replacements for a facial covering or a mask, which we have talked about. So based on all of this, what we're saying is that the facial covering is a school rule. It's required to be worn. Just like any other school rule, if students aren't following the rules, then we would have to consider discipline for students. And I only say that because that question has come up from our community and from, from the Board of Education. We are committed to the safety of all of our students and our staff. And so we are committed to the requirement of facial coverings being worn. It really is about the safety of everyone in our buildings. Now, we can talk a little bit more specifically about the secondary preparations that are ongoing. Our buildings have worked very hard to create signage, to identify areas in their buildings, to label their hallways, their seats. I can tell you that, that all of these things that are being put in place are very significant. The reason we started with our elementary schools is, is not a shock. They're smaller schools. So we recognize that at the secondary level, we are going to have more kids in our buildings on a given day. So when we talk about those numbers, at the middle schools, we'll be talking about numbers somewhere between 300 and 550 students in the building on a given day. This is a reduction from what we normally have in our buildings, which is between 600 and 1,300 students at the middle school level. So this is more than, you know, more than half of our students that we're talking about, who won't be in the buildings on a given day. And that's because we take the CVVA, the Virtual Academy of Students, into that mathematical equation as well. So when you talk about the high schools, you're talking about about 850 to 950 kids in our high schools on a given day. And again, that's in buildings that typically hold 1,900 to 2,300 kids in our 10, 12 buildings. So again, you know, less than half of what normally comes in. Our ninth grade centers will be very manageable with numbers between 250 and 350 students on a given day, again, in buildings that can hold between 700 and 800 students. You can see some of the hallway, I'll say decorations, some of the guidance that has been given for our students. I can tell you, I've walked a few of the buildings and I can tell you that it's pretty elaborate in what they're trying to do. Some of the buildings will be focusing on the education of the students, more of a PBIS model, teaching students what is expected of them in addition to the labels and the signage that'll be in their hallways. It's just something that will become that normal return to school. So typically with PBIS, you know, our schools are talking a lot about what the expected behaviors are for students in the buildings. And obviously with COVID and what it brings as far as challenging, as far as challenges, this will be part of that education as kids return to our buildings. Next slide, please, Dr. Brasky. There was a couple of pictures, two of our lunchrooms, one of the Dakota High School lunchroom. And there's some, some questions about, you know, spacing in our lunchrooms. It's important to notice that we'll be using different spaces throughout our buildings. So here, as we prepare for the hybrid return, the arrival and dismissal, something we spent a lot of time talking about, students will have a staggered arrival, meaning that different, different students and the way they arrive to school will be released into the building at certain times. We'll be using multiple entrances in our schools depending on how kids are getting to school. We'll also be using the same for dismissal. So students will be dismissed out many doors, multiple exits being used. We talk about passing time, hallway traffic. You saw some of the labeling on our, our hallway floors. We'll have one-way or divided traffic flows depending on the building and the setup of that building. I, I mentioned last, or two weeks ago, too, the health department's talked to us about passing times. And because we're talking about limited time periods and we're talking about students walking in the same direction, the health department is not as concerned as one may think about passing times. You know, we talked last week in our, again, two weeks ago in our Q and A with the board. And we did mention that, you know, you, you are going to see students in hallways, you know, between classes. There will be students in hallways moving in the same direction. It may look busy to someone who's not seen hallways before in our middle schools and high school. But again, when you talk about the sheer number of kids that will be in our building as compared to a typical year, it's going to be quite sparse as compared to what it usually is. Like I mentioned before, less than half of the students that we typically have in the building at any one given time. Next slide, please. We talked about lunch periods. Every other seat, you know, in some of our buildings, we do have the larger round tables. So students who aren't facing the same direction will actually be about six feet apart from one another. We'll be utilizing every other seat with all of our lunch spaces in all of our buildings. We will utilize outdoor seating whenever available and appropriate, depending on the weather. I mentioned the staggered dismissal, you know, this will also include lunch periods, cleaning protocols, expectations of our students who will be cleaning up after themselves along with the available lunch monitors. In our classrooms, you know, we are committed, as I mentioned, to reducing the numbers of kids in our classes across the board, sixth through 12th grade. Students will be facing the same direction whenever possible. I do write whenever possible there because there, we will have some creative setups in our classroom depending on the shape of the room and the number of the kids. When I say different directions, some kids may face a different direction depending on where they are in the room. But we don't want us students facing one another. And that's a commitment we're making. And so our buildings are committed to making sure that every student has their, their own desk in a classroom. So they're not sitting two students per table, which is something that, as I mentioned, we're very committed to in all of our classrooms at each level. Masks will be worn in the classrooms. As I mentioned, there will be as much social distancing as possible in our classrooms. And so we do feel that the environment will be one that is much safer than it would be if we weren't coming back in a hybrid model. So we had talked two weeks ago about a potential return date. We have stayed with the November 9th as a target date for return for our secondary students. November 9th is the start of second quarter. So this will be a natural transition for our students. For example, at the middle school level, we'll be starting a, a new elective course. And so they will be starting fresh in a new elective course after grades are due. Our secondary teachers will be finalizing grades for first quarter during the week of a student return, potentially. By waiting till November 9th, it does give us some time to continue to address some of the staffing issues that we currently face in our schools with some of our support positions. I talked about the AB schedules that we're creating with students. The, the work being done in our buildings, I'm very proud of. I mentioned the administrators, the scheduling coordinators, our counselors are all working extremely hard, doing an excellent job. They've, they've shared spreadsheets of how to identify students who we could consider for balancing, looking at everything from who has siblings at different levels to who doesn't, to whether or not a student could be moved in multiple classes that would actually balance out other classes in addition to the one that we're looking at with the high numbers. So because each time you look at a student and, you know, consider the idea of them switching from an A to a B, it impacts six different classes. So every student that our administrators and counselors and scheduling coordinators are looking at, they have to look at six different periods of balancing for every one student they're looking to move. And that's where some of the challenges come. But again, I'm very proud of the time they're putting in and the work they're doing because of their commitment to the safety of our return. The next slide, please. So we, we did spend some time to really go over the rationale, you know, for the hybrid return. The Board of Education, I know, has received a number of emails that, you know, many will tell you why we should be bringing all the kids back. Some will tell you why the hybrid plan is a good plan. Some will tell you why we shouldn't be considering bringing kids back at all. So I want the board to really understand, you know, from our perspective, the, the different factors that we're taking into account that we're not taking this lightly, you know, as we consider bringing kids back into our buildings. We've said from the beginning that our goal is and has been to get kids back to school face-to-face. I, I don't know anyone who will argue that there's a better quality of instruction, better engagement for learning than having kids face-to-face with their teachers. So while students right now, I will argue, have access to their education in our remote setting, we still have many students who are struggling. I don't want this to sound at all like I'm not extremely proud of what we are doing in Chippewa Valley Schools because I could not be more proud of the job that our teachers and our administrators are doing in order to provide quality education from a remote setting for our students. It's absolutely remarkable, to be honest with you. But I'll tell you that as we've gotten into the school year now and we start to pull data, it's data that you can't really argue. There is no doubt that the struggles that our students face are real and they are definitely impacting our most at-risk students. The number of F grades at our secondary level are, are extremely high, I guess is the best way to put it. Right now, as we approach coming to the end of the first quarter, we've been looking at the number of Fs that we typically have given. And we're specifically looking at last year and the number of Fs assigned at the secondary level during first, during first quarter. If you pulled our data right now, you would see that we are looking at about twice as many Fs at the high school level right now than we issued at the end of first quarter last year. Okay, granted, they're two to two and a half times higher right now. I, I do recognize that some of those grades will get better before the end of the term. It's not shocking to the board. I'm sure to know that at the end of each quarter is when a lot of students start turning in their late assignments. And so I do predict that those numbers will get slightly better. But there, there's no way that our, our failure rates at this point will not be higher than they were last year. At the middle school level, it was even more significant. Our four schools all had different rates to some degree, but all were extremely high. On average, we were looking at five to six times as many Fs right now being issued to our middle school students. Again, I'm so happy with the access that our kids have and the job that our teachers are doing. But I will tell you that being fully remote does bring its challenges. And this is where some of that data is showing the challenges that our students face on a day-to-day basis in a remote setting. The hybrid return will, will provide, you know, the safety measures, as I've mentioned, that will limit the spread of the virus. It'll provide such needed in-person support to our kids. I talked about the, the support that our students will get. It's not just academic, you know, there is the emotional support that we have to factor in. Our kids, there's no doubt that they are, you know, starving to be around one another. And some of them are still doing that outside of school, as we all know. And I will tell you that having it in a controlled area will help with some of the monitoring of student behavior while they are together. Granted, I, I recognize that there are challenges that we face at the secondary level. But when you look at all of this data, especially with the struggles in academics and knowing that we need to support our most at-risk kids, we do feel that the, the rationale for a return is something that we really should be considering. We talked about the elementary return going very well. We've looked around the county and we have school districts all around us who are also bringing kids back if they have not already done so. We are in communication with those schools. And while some schools obviously have to work through situations, we're confident that we'll have the same ability to do so as they have. What we're finding is that the spread of the virus is pretty limited in schools. It doesn't mean you don't have cases. It doesn't mean that you don't impact schools with cases. But because we have protocols in place, a lot of those cases are identified early and the appropriate measures are taken to make sure that we're not spreading that virus throughout our community. So I think the next slide is where my counterpart, Mr. Kozlowski, will take over and talk a little bit about the curriculum and actual instruction of a hybrid model and what it'll look like for our students and families.
Thank you, Mr. Sibley. Good evening, everyone. So one of the questions that we've been asked in various forums is, isn't a hybrid learning model a reduction in instructional time compared to remote learning? And as I thought about how to address this question, I thought it might be useful to introduce an analogy because sometimes when we reframe things or reframe a situation, it helps us understand a little differently. So on the next slide, these are some pictures from Copper Harbor. Some people who are listening in may be familiar with Copper Harbor. It's way at the extreme northern end of the upper peninsula of Michigan. You can even see there, it's almost 2,000 miles away from Florida. So I Googled to find out how far away it is from our board office here. And the next slide there, you can see it gave me three different routes to get from here to Copper Harbor. The most direct route, just under 600 miles, and it says it would take about nine and a half hours. There's a second route, which would take us by ferry across Lake Michigan to Milwaukee. We'd go through Green Bay, work our way up through Wisconsin, eventually in the upper peninsula, and then eventually onto Copper Harbor. And then there's a third route, the most, the southernmost route, which is about 762 miles, 12 and a half hour drive through Chicago, all the way up along Lake Michigan and then eventually on up to Copper Harbor. Now, on the next slide, I replaced the word, the, the name of the town, Copper Harbor, with Learning Target. And when we talk about which model we're in, we're, we're always focused on learning. Regardless of which route we take or how long it takes, that focus doesn't change. So in this, in this case, it's not about how long it takes, it's about getting to Copper Harbor. When we talk about school, it's about what are the learning targets? Next slide, please. So all along, we've talked about four different learning models and we've, we've had three going so far this year. Currently, we have three going. We have remote for secondary, hybrid for elementary, and we've had our virtual academy going all along. And we're all very familiar with in-person instruction. Each of these, I mean, completely in-person instruction. Each of these has its advantages and disadvantages. Each has strengths and weaknesses. Each has efficiencies and inefficiencies. And our teachers have been doing a great job of adopting, regardless of which mode we're in, to make sure that we stay focused on that same set of learning targets that we would in any other year. If we move to the next slide, if you were to walk into any of our classrooms in any normal school year, you'd see a variety of different things happening. You'd see teachers at the front of the room, teaching to the whole class. You might see small groups working together. You might see students silent reading or at their desk writing. You might see them gathered on a, on a rug, doing an activity together. You might see some computer-based learning. This has always happened. And then when the pandemic hit and things changed in March, we suddenly had a name for these things. And the next slide, we started to call it synchronous learning and asynchronous learning. So synchronous would be anything that's happening directly with the teacher, the whole class together or, or a part of the class. And then asynchronous are those things that could happen in different parts of the classroom, in different parts of the school. When we talk about remote, it could happen in people's homes, can even happen in different, from different states. In a traditional setting, when we talk about at different times, it could be that different learners in the classroom are doing different things at different times. But now we have a situation where sometimes students are doing things in the middle of the night or during different parts of the day, whatever fits their schedule. So next slide shows some different activities that kind of lend themselves to one format or the other. Under synchronous, you see explicit instruction, small group instruction, class dialogue, guided practice, community building type activities. Teachers are able to give real-time feedback to students. Asynchronous activities might include reading, note-taking, viewing videos, online discussions, any type of practice, any type of review, writing, journaling, anything that students might create, they could do when they're not together with the class and computer-based learning. Now, what happens when we make a transition from completely remote to hybrid? Next slide, is those asynchronous activities become what really makes sense to do at home? And those synchronous activities make sense to do while students are in school. So again, it's not a matter of more time or less time. It's, it's how we, how we, where we place these activities and which environments they happen in. We have a few examples of some things that have actually been happening in a hybrid model. So in kindergarten, a class was taught from the Bridges Math Program, building 10 using the 10-frame, five-wise cards. Students were using 10 frames and 10 trains. And then at home, they did the home connection page and they did some digital workplaces games through Schoology. A second grade example on the next slide. So in, in this class, they did some story and comprehension in class. They used their, their smart notebook slides. They did some spelling and phonics lessons together. And then the home assignment was the daily routine of reading to, reading independently, using the decodable readers, writing and reading a response, writing in a journal, a handwriting book and a write-in reader. And then we have a fourth grade example from science where a concept is taught in class or a Latin. Where a concept is taught in class or a lesson, a lesson set in person. They discuss what a scientific model is and then the assignment at home is to create the science model. Which then students bring back to the classroom to work on and improve during face-to-face instruction. And then we also know that in some classes and in some courses, and all of this varies by grade, course, teacher. But in some cases, it 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 gets switched so that. Students are doing some of the independent work first at home, like watching an instructional video. Reading and taking notes, maybe listening to a podcast, maybe doing some kind of practice. And then they carry that learning into the classroom where they can expand on it with some class dialogue. Students can get individual questions answered. That's where some guided practice can happen. And again, that's an environment in which teachers can provide feedback to students. So back to the analogy, it's really not about. We we can't always say that just because we're spending more time on something, we're going to get a better result. So if we focus again just on where it is we're trying to go, then whatever time is available. Becomes used differently to ensure that the learning is happening.
Thank you, Mr. Kozlowski, and thank you, Ed Services Team. We appreciate that, everything that you've you've said to this evening. I am going to turn it back to Mr. Roberts at this point, who also has some comments in relation to this.
Keep doing that. I think Sarah must have read my lips because I was muted. Good job, Sarah. So one of the things that we've been involved with in all of this decision-making is is just COVID numbers. And because all of our decisions have been made. Trying to understand what COVID is like in our community and what it would mean to open under certain conditions. So I just want to go back a little bit, the next slide will take us back. To where we started. So one of the, one of the. Metrics that's used to understand this is cases per million. And we started in August and. When we made the decision to not go to a hybrid at the beginning of the year, it was the middle of August. And if you see here, one of, one of the metrics we used to help us make that decision. Was the cases per million. So you see on August 13th, it was 128 cases per million. So if you look a little lower on this with the the levels. The county health department, which would be through the CDC. Issues levels for cases per million and there are six levels, there's low. And then there's five letters that are. Given letters. So we have A, B, C, D, and E. And you can see here that of those with cases per million, we, in August 13th, we had 128 cases per million. Which falls into level D. So that's, that's about 60% the way up the chart. Because it's in the D level, you go D and E. On September 18th, so after the school year had started, you see here, these are Macomb County numbers. It was 42 cases per million. So things had improved significantly. In 42 cases per million, per million would put you at level C, but really at the very low end of level C. So that's where we were then. And October 1st was the date that we decided to. Send our students back, starting on the the 12th. To the classroom at the elementary level. And when we made that decision, the case was 81 per million and it still is in level D, but it's at the lower end of level D. We've moved up higher, or at least we were in August, and now you can see October 19th. We're up similar to where we were in August with. In a level D category for the number of cases per million. So we're we're not a whole lot different when it comes to cases per million than where we were in August. So that's one metric that's used to determine. Sort of community spread, where where COVID exists, what it's like in the community. There's another, there's another way to look at this, and Sarah, if you would please pull up the next slide. One is, one is the positivity rate. And they figure this in a seven-day rolling average. So each day, a new day is added to 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 make the average and the seventh day is dropped off. So in mid-August, we had a positivity rate of 7.7.5%. And right now, today, this was, this number is as of today, we are 6.6. So in this, according to how positivity rates are scaled, we're at. Level A, which is low and then A. So between 3 and 7% is considered level A. So and it kind of goes up from there. So those are two of the major metrics that we use. Now, the numbers that we just looked at were all county numbers. So really what you need to do on this is dig a little deeper. Because the county, just like the state of Michigan, does not necessarily reflect us. So Sarah, if you would go forward. You'll see that these are the cases by month. Since the, since the outbreak of COVID began in March. The top, top, the top row is Clinton Township, CT. You can see in March, it was at 362. And if you can just follow it right through, the bottom one is June, of the, excuse me, the bottom one is Macomb Township. And you can follow those numbers, it it kind of ran through these two communities a little bit differently. But when you get to June, and this is when we we began this. This is when we, at the end of June, received our directions for completing our return to school plan. Things were excellent. We were at 60 cases in Clinton Township and 52 in in Macomb Township. And then you can see what happened as the summer wore on. And you see kind of how there and by August, it had really flipped between our two townships. Now, I would like to point out that there are other districts that serve these townships. Other school districts, so we can't say that all of these cases are within the community we serve. But we are the major provider of education in both of these townships. So the numbers could be possibly a little bit lower in each of them. But in August, in Macomb Township, we had nearly 400 cases. Then you see September where it started to go down again. And then you get to October and you see where we are two-thirds into October. So it it has increased in the month of October. I guess if you were to follow this out. You would not go as high as August, at least in Macomb Township. Clinton might be similar to the number of cases in our townships. So then we dug a little bit deeper and we asked the health county, the Macomb County Health Department to help us with some numbers here. And so they provided some of the numbers that appear in the following two slides. The, this is, this, what this slide depicts is a two-week period, starting at the end of September to October 10th. And this is the, the COVID cases that were identified in school-aged children, and this is Macomb County. So in all of Macomb County, for this two-week period. For what is approximately elementary-age students, there were 37 cases. This represents 2.4% of all of the cases in Macomb County of all ages. Our middle school students, 11 to 13 years old, there were 29 cases. And that's 1.9% of the total county numbers. And then our high school, which has the most cases, across the county, 14 to 17-year-olds, was 63 cases. So that's a two-week period. That's 4.1% of all cases in the county are high school students. So then we dug a little bit deeper on this and we go here. And I was unable to give percentages on this, but. For this two-week period, which is two days off from the last slide, these are the kids. Who are school-aged children, ages 5 to 17. In this two-week period in Clinton Township, there were four students who were identified. In Macomb Township, there were 16. So I think what this is supposed to help with is really drilling down on the numbers. Now, we know that COVID. When you operate a school is not just a student issue. It is, it is, it is the issue which which reflects the the range of people within a school. Whether that be secretaries, teachers, custodians, bus drivers, food service workers, parapros. They all figure into this because we need all those employees in order to operate a school efficiently. But what we notice is, is that at least on numbers reported to, or cases reported to the Clint, to Clint, to the Health Department. Those numbers are pretty low in in children or school-aged children. So I think that, I wanted to point out this data because I think this is just important to understand. Our ability to operate schools at this time. So would board members have any questions about any of this?
I have, I have a question. So did we analyze this by number of cases? Like in the, what our staff would be in, you know, like our adult, how many cases of adults over the age of 17 have. Contracted COVID?
Well, as we all know, we've had a number of cases, but we did not analyze that. But that number of cases, percentage-wise, to our total number of employees would be very low. But I must add that. And other school districts are having the same experience. I mean, every time you have a case of COVID, there are issues that you need to address and deal with. Whether that be, you know, who has it, who they were in contact with, is it a teacher? Could the students in the classroom be close contacts? And so that all leads to who needs to be quarantined. That's just one of the challenges of of dealing with COVID.
Right, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
I I have a couple of questions, but I guess my question really is more from Mr. Kozlowski. With his Copper Harbor example, the three routes took different times to get there. But in terms of secondary education with our AP students. We don't have that luxury of time and taking different routes. They have to be prepared for exams by the first week of May. So what is the thought about pacing those AP classes? So that we are able to make sure that these kids are prepared. By that first week of May, when we don't have that luxury of time to take different routes of getting there?
So like any of our other classes, it's just a matter of moving things around. It's not necessarily that less content is being covered, it's just being covered in a different way. So the time in class is used to help clarify things. But a lot of our AP students are doing a lot of the reading and things on their own anyway. I don't know if Mr. Sibley has anything to add to that.
Your AP students, I think, you know, as Walt was saying, they can do more on their own. I'm not saying that's ideal necessarily. But when you have your your motivated students who are going to have success with their remote setting. Our teachers would spend the time in class really going through the skills necessary on the actual assessments. So even last year, what we found was that the students who were preparing for AP exams. When we were out in March, continued to do that work as they needed to. They were able to stay in contact with their teachers, they were able to work on things as they needed to, to still prepare for those exams. Now, there were issues with the actual online exam that was very challenging for students. But they did show that resiliency and that, you know, the motivation that our AP students have. So much like Walt is saying, I think they still fit into the example. I think that our AP students are going to find additional resources. Our teachers are going to provide those additional resources and they're going to come prepared with the right questions for that in-person instruction. And again, now you're talking about an AP teacher who's working with half of the students at one time. And so when you're talking about advanced learners, the amount of material that can be covered in a short span i- is going to move pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you. But in terms of the, I have another kind of follow-up with that. In terms of the real-time feedback, that won't be happening on the asynchronous day, right? Kids will have to wait for the next time that they're in class, whereas now they are getting nearly immediate feedback.
Well, they're getting nearly feed, nearly immediate feedback in a setting with 30 other kids. And or 28 other kids or whatever it is, and some technical difficulties potentially. In class, there's only going to be eight, 10, 12 kids. So that's where I talk about some of the efficiencies that are gained in that model.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and I I have, I have one question for Mr. Roberts in terms of the number. In terms of drilling down the numbers, were you able to drill down in terms of hospitalizations and the severity of these cases? Because I know that one of our staff members had quite a severe case and was on a vent for a while.
No, you know what, I did not, I did not look there. So I mean, that's something I could do, but I I did not look at hospitalizations.
I did look at, if you, Mr. Roberts, I could chime in real quick if you don't mind.
Nope, please do.
I did look at that this morning, Beth, and in our county, we were at 38% of ICU. Rooms being used for COVID, which is still in a, it was a green category, put us in a low category compared to other areas. According to their rankings, I don't know what my heart is, but when you move from being into a more at-risk area, but it was 38% in our county.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bednar.
It kind of is, Laura, were you going to ask something? I'll wait to make a point.
Go ahead. Yeah, I have a question.
All right, I'll just, because it kind of fits there.
Can you keep that screen down though, so we can see everybody? Thank you.
All right, I just make one quick comment that's kind of related to that. One thing that we've really worked hard with our employees on is employee behavior related to that. Now, the word behavior might sound a little bit harsh, it's not intended to. What we, what we are striving to do is to make sure that if there is a cold case of COVID. It is, is not something that's transmitted within our school. So we've really talked about mask-wearing and social distancing. With our staff, with each other, with our staff, with their students. Hopefully, we're getting better with that because it is so easy. It's so easy for all of us. I can't be critical of people about this, but it's just something we need to remind our employees to not put your guards down. And we do that here in our central office building. We do not want COVID spread to be the result of our behavior in our workplace. So we talk about mask-wearing, we talk about the distance we keep from each other. We talk about what we can do using technology as far as instead of in-person. And that's the same thing we're working really hardly with our staff to keep in mind. Now, I hear stories, I'm glad I'm not hearing these stories about our district, where people eat lunch together. In a space, adults, and that's not going on here. But that is, that is a lot of work. And that is not the fault of our employees, because people have natural human tendencies and that's to be together. And and so we're really working hard because what we don't want is outbreaks to be because of us. If COVID is in our school, we want it to be, well, this sounds really bad, but we want it to come from outside. Not to be passed inside. So I mean, that's just really important for the successful operation, whether we're, we have success or we don't have success. So, all right, Laura, please, questions?
Thank you. So I, at the last meeting, I asked many questions and. Unfortunately, concerns, and I didn't get any individual responses. And so I was looking for some feedback on that tonight, which I didn't hear. So I don't know if I need to ask my questions again. Or if they, you can just let me know they, my concerns were discarded, if you could follow up.
No, please, please ask the questions, because we did talk about things, so maybe they haven't shown up here and they should have, but please go ahead.
Okay, so. Um, okay, so the first one was start doing a gradual transition back in, doing middle school first, with even perhaps the sixth grade starting a few days earlier, then moving to high school. The next question was regarding congregating inside of classrooms. Um, and the fact that it's more than five minutes frequently. Um, staffing has a really big issue, um, and I'm not sure that that can be resolved in two weeks. Um, and, um, exactly how this plan incorporates the changes with the, um, CVAA.
Okay, so let's start with, because we did talk about a transitional plan and I'm going to let Paul address that. Um, let's start with that issue, Paul, if you could address a transitional plan and why we ended up still suggesting that we do the same thing, but we did try to consider things that we could, um, help with the transition from fifth to sixth grade. So Paul, go ahead.
Sure, Ms. Carter, I do apologize, we did talk about these things, I didn't include it in my presentation. Um, we did talk about whether or not we would look at a transition plan that would bring middle school back first. Uh, it, it is still something that we, we could consider. The reason that we didn't though, is because we believe that secondary, all starting at the same time, would keep our secondary teachers, uh, kind of on the same pace. Uh, we believe that our plan, um, wouldn't necessarily require, uh, that we wait to bring secondary back. And so we do believe that bringing the kids back to school is a way to address those concerns that I brought up as far as the rationale of why we were bringing kids back to school. And so by looking at kind of the, the grades that our, our students are, are struggling with, looking at, trying to bring kids back sooner rather than later. We thought it was important to address that. Um, we also talked about the sixth grade idea and what we are working on is a sixth grade orientation plan, where our sixth graders would be brought back into the building, uh, earlier than other students, perhaps for a day, which would actually mirror what we do, uh, in years past, where our students are actually bussed over from their elementary schools for a one-day orientation in the buildings. Uh, it's done at the end of the school year. So this year, uh, at the end of last year, they still did a virtual orientation. But what we're working on is a plan that would actually allow families to bring their sixth graders into the building. Now, we are working on that with the association and so I'm working with the middle school principals. And we are ironing out some of the details of a sixth grade orientation plan. And then we'll be working with the association to make sure that those plans make sense. Uh, so we are looking at that. So we're not sure about starting school early because that creates a little bit of a, a challenge for us, for students who are serviced by multiple teachers at multiple levels. And so if you, uh, were to bring kids back into the building, you'd have some teachers teaching remotely to seventh graders, for example, at the same time as the sixth graders are, uh, there in the building. And so we saw the return to instruction being a little bit more beneficial, that if you brought all grades back at the same time, uh, especially within the middle school and the high school, it would be ideal. So the sixth grade orientation would allow the sixth graders to come in. And we're talking about whether we would have our sixth grade teachers, uh, just not teaching that day, or whether we would have sixth through eighth grade teachers not teaching that day and allow the sixth graders to come in, uh, while the seventh and eighth graders stayed home, perhaps they worked on missing assignments because, and again, these are things we have to talk about with the association, our teachers, so I'm not trying to surprise anybody here. Um, but looking at ways that we could help students, perhaps if they are struggling with grades, uh, to use a day, uh, that we would look at for an orientation. Uh, you talked about congregating in classrooms, you know, that is something that we're going to have to continuously monitor as our.
I was in the hallway, congregating in the hallways.
Sure, okay, so in the hallways, uh, because we are looking at kids moving from class to class, you know, it's, it's something that we'll have to, you know, continue to encourage our kids to follow. We talk about PBIS, we talk about the fact that kids should be moving. You know, we do have hall monitors at the secondary level. Uh, we do have teachers who often stand outside their doors during passing times. And so getting kids to continuously move is something that we will be working on to get them moving from class to class. So yeah, it's, it's something we'll have to work through. Uh, you almost have to have the kids in the buildings to monitor what's going to work best to keep them moving. Uh, but yeah, in the classrooms and in the hallways, you know, we're going to try to discourage congregation as much as we can. You know, we're going to be open with our kids about why. Uh, and the fact that that is when you have to be concerned with the spread. At the same time though, we know that our passing times in the buildings are five to six minutes long. And so by health department regulations, we're actually not putting kids at risk of close contact. So close contact is within six feet over a fifteen-minute period, whether you're in a mask or not. And so our five to six-minute passing times actually don't qualify for the close contact.
But what I'm talking about is where there's, you said that you're, you're going to have some release at different times. So everybody's heading to one teacher's classroom, they're still in the class, there's kids waiting outside the class. The teacher is not out there because she's still in class and you have seven, eight kids hanging out, waiting to get into the next class.
Thank you. So I, I actually did, I did remove that from our presentation this evening, but I do apologize for not pointing that out. So I've had multiple meetings with the high school principals especially and with our middle school principals. And that is something that they're, as, after reviewing that, they don't think that would be the best way to start. And so instead of staggering the dismissal from each period, they believe that shortening the amount of time that students are actually passing is a better use of that time, encouraging them to keep moving, because then you don't have that approach of some kids arriving at a time when other kids have not left yet. So thank you for clarifying that, but we did talk about that.
So if there's a kid that has the classroom up in the math at Chipwok, up in the math hallway upstairs, and then has to get downstairs to the English hallway, they're going to be able to do that in a shortened period of time?
No, they'll have the same six-minute passing time as they've always had. It's exactly the same as what it, what it has been. So they've always been able to do that and they will continue to do so.
Oh, I thought you just said it was a shortened time.
No, last time I presented, we talked about whether we would let students leave a minute or two before the bell rang in order to stagger dismissals. So now we're going to go back to a standard dismissal and passing time.
Okay.
You know, Laura, I think, I want to add him to talk about staffing, but I, what was the third question again? I'm sorry, I should have written it down. Cause you had four.
Um, I had, it was the CVAA scheduling changes. Like how, how that's going to be, how you manage that in classroom sizes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to have Paul talk about that and then Adam can talk about staffing.
Sure, CVVA changes, uh, at this time will be extremely challenging at the secondary level. Because if a student is currently enrolled in CVVA, they're being taught by our teachers, um, obviously, as we all know, uh, with specific classes being taught by those teachers. So if a student wanted to go from CVVA to the hybrid model or vice versa, that student would have to be completely rescheduled. And so the, the challenges would be trying to figure out how to match that schedule in a brand-new scheduling process. So it may not be possible for all students and they may have issues with trying to mirror a schedule and we may not have space. And so students who want to transition now will definitely be a challenge at secondary.
And is that the same for the secondary, for the second semester?
Second semesters, we can definitely make some adjustments at second semester, because at second semester, you can actually have teachers' schedules change. So we would have some availability then. The challenge would be the immediate transition that many families have asked for. Um, you know, at, for example, a quarter, uh, break, which doesn't really work well into the high school schedule because we work on semester credits of point-five credits. And oftentimes you need point-five of any class to work towards either the requirement for graduation or half of the requirement for graduation. So quarter credits are not something that Chipwok Valley has offered in the past because they're not terribly useful. So at the semester break, we would have some flexibility for schedules to change for students.
Okay, and when you were talking about the, um, why not separating the middle school and the high schools in terms of, um, going back in, you were talking about how the middle school teachers need to be in the same place as the high school teachers. I don't really know what that means, they don't usually interact with each other.
Well, in our, in our, um, our teaching ranks, if you will, we'll call them, or the, uh, in the association, we've had a very, we have very similar structures for elementary teachers and we have very similar structures for secondary teachers. And so in an effort to be consistent with our secondary teachers, that's what I'm referring to, we bring them all back at the same time. So we do believe that the plan wouldn't have to be staggered for that reason.
I, I get, I still don't know what you're saying. Sorry.
That our, our secondary teachers all have six class periods. And so, uh, we, we feel that our teachers would be prepared at both the middle school and high school level. And so bringing the kids back at the same time would be beneficial for all, because we believe getting them back into school is helpful. So we don't see why we would need to stagger necessarily. I guess I'm not sure what, what you're asking, if I'm not answering the question.
I, I think that you, when you examined that, just did not see advantages to staggering. You thought, we did not, the kids back at one time seemed to make the most sense. That we just, there was nothing that we would learn from that that would really help us. Being that the buildings are all separate anyways, it's, if you were going to bring, might have an advantage to bringing grades back at a certain time within a building, say sixth grade at one time, then seventh and eighth, you could think of some advantages to that. There are disadvantages, but to the two levels separately, there are no disadvantages to bringing or, or advantages to starting one and then starting the other later.
Correct. The only thing we did look at was, was staffing.
Okay, we're going to move to staffing and then that, I'm going to have Adam talk about staffing. We've talked a lot about staffing internally much, so go ahead, Adam.
Um, Mr., Mr. Roberts, I did, I do have a couple of questions and I don't know if this is the right time, but I think, I think it is. Um, is that okay?
Well, Adam was going to talk about staffing, are they staffing questions? Cause we can do either way.
Not yet.
Let's, can we finish Laura's questions and we'll go to staffing?
Oh, of course, of course. Yes.
So go ahead.
Staffing.
Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent Roberts, Board of Education. Um, so last Board of Education meeting, we talked just in general about, um, staffing, um, issues. And, and I articulated to the board that basically we have two buckets. We have normal staffing issues that we face during a non-pandemic, um, year. Um, and then we have this bucket of the staffing issues that the pandemic has presented to us. And at the last board meeting, uh, we had, um, district-wide, just under eighty vacancies to be filled. And that, that eighty vacancies represents both buckets, normal staffing and, um, normal staffing issues. And then the staffing issues presented by, um, the pandemic. And, um, as of Friday, um, we were at fifty-four vacancies district-wide. So we made some headway, um, in hiring, uh, we made some headway in people returning back to work. Um, but we still, uh, remain, um, short-staffed in, in many of the support areas. And so I just want to be clear that these, these are the support areas, para educators, clerical, um, uh, bus drivers, food service, um, custodians. When I break this down by level, we have, um, roughly, um, twenty-five vacancies at the, uh, secondary level, twenty-seven at the elementary, and then there's two, uh, that are, um, skilled maintenance positions. Um, that we, we, they're, they're, we code them as the admin building, at the admin building. So we have fifty-two vacancies that directly impact our K-12 buildings. Um, we have of those fifty, um, of the fifty-four, so I'll include the two that are represented here at the admin building. Of the fifty-four vacancies, um, we have twenty-four of those positions currently have applicants, um, in, in the pipeline or that have applied for the position. On my office, every day is emailing the hiring managers whenever a new applicant has applied for one of their positions available. Our hiring managers are, um, interviewing quickly, um, virtually. Um, part, part of that is almo- almost out of necessity, because what we're seeing is, um, one of those individuals may apply for four or five different jobs. So while we may have, you know, um, half of the positions have applicants in it, um, some of those applicants may have applied for multiple jobs. Um, so, so we do have, uh, many vacancies. Um, we've done our social media awareness campaign, put those out on Facebook. We've asked for building administrators to use their social media platforms, um, to push that information out. It, it will be a challenge. What, what we have currently done to staff elementary is we've reassigned secondary staff that do not have students in front of them that we could repurpose and we have done so. And that was a monumental task, um, and we will be working once, uh, the Board of Education has identified a, a potential return date, if they do that tonight. Uh, for secondary schools, my office will then begin to kind of reverse that process because those individuals that will repurpose that secondary have a right to their position at, at those secondary buildings. Um, we'll continue to push applications forward, um, we'll continue to process applicants. But I do anticipate, um, vacancies, um, across the district. Um, some of the things that we've done, um, in, 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 just in one example is food service. So where we've gone away from cash, um, handling at, in the food service department. So we've been able to repurpose cashiers and kind of disperse them within the food service department. But again, even with some of these strategies, um, we are still going to have vacancies, um, in many of our support positions. And again, that's para support and custodial support. The para group, uh, para educators is where the biggest, um, need is at this time.
Laura, is that to carry your questions or are you done? I'm the squealer's next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bednar.
Okay, thank you. Denise, you had some questions?
Okay, well, okay, so that raised a few more questions for me. So right now you said there were twenty-five at the middle school, I'm sorry, and twenty-seven at the elementary, is that correct?
Twenty, twenty-five at the secondary.
Oh, secondary.
Yep, and twenty-seven at the elementary.
Okay, so currently, um, how are we handling that? I know you said that we have moved people from secondary to the elementary schools. Um, is that covering the twenty-seven vacancies or do we have twenty-seven in addition to that?
No, that's covering the vacancies. Um, now again, once we, again, assuming that we have a return to school, uh, under a similar model for secondary, most folks that repurpose to elementary will then move back to secondary and then that's where you'll see those vacancies. So again, you'll, you'll see the twenty-seven vacancies at the elementary. They're still posted, but you'll visibly, the, the buildings will visibly see those vacancies. Um, and that, obviously, that'll be the same at, uh, secondary, there'll be twenty-five, um, vacancies across our buildings at the secondary level.
So, um, do we have a plan to provide safety, cleanliness and support for all students if we send them back to school? I guess that's my question, Mr. Roberts or Adam, whoever is appropriate to answer that.
Yeah, I would have Adam, he's looking at that every day, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so from a cleanliness standpoint, we have talked to our custodial supervisor and our cust- our custodial staff. And we do believe we can provide the, the cleanliness standard that we've articulated in our return-to-school plan. Um, we do have the supplies necessary, we have been evaluating the supplies that we utilize. We're making sure that those cleaning protocols are, are followed. Um, we do believe we can provide that, um, that support. Again, keeping in mind that a lot of the commu- a lot of the community use of our buildings after hours is nonexistent.
Right.
So we're able to get in and clean, we've asked staff to leave our buildings, um, an hour, no later than an hour. We're telling them to vacate the building no longer than an hour after being there. So that'll vacate their classroom so we can get in and do the cleaning we need to do. Um, so again, from a, from a custodial services, we believe that we can do the things that we've articulated, we can do now. From a para educator and student support perspective, because they, they provide a critical bridge for many of our students, um, we do have concerns. We've asked, um, special services, uh, to identify those critical shortage areas and they have done so. Uh, we are working with them and filling those, we are, um, making headway i- in that area. And I do believe we're going to be in good shape when it comes to those, um, critical student, um, um, support paras. Um, we will have some reading para positions open. Um, and again, keep in mind that we do have some internal movement, right? So some of our applicants are internal folks who are looking for, uh, promotion in position. So if we grant that, that's going to create a vacancy on the other end, so we're, we're trying to be kindness of that as well. Um, but we've, we've identified critical, um, positions and we believe we're going to be covered. Uh, crossing guards, we're, we're short crossing guards. So, you know, one of the things I. So, you know, one of the things I asked Ms. Blaine and she's done is to put this out on our Facebook page. I know that we heard the community told us loud and clear that they're willing to volunteer and help us. We can't have volunteers in the classroom, but what we can do is they can apply for some of those crossing guard positions, those lunch monitor positions and help us that way. They can, you know, get to the kid's school a little bit. And those are those positions that they're hard to find because they're short in nature, they're a couple hours a day, but they're critical, right? Students cross busy street, we need someone there. And what's happened in the past, because we've been short before, is our building administrator or a teacher has gone out and made sure that that's happened. And again, with trying to make sure people are wearing masks, that the buildings are wiped down and clean, many people are wearing many different hats. And so we are, we are trying to get out there and get that out in social media, that we need, we need employees, we need staff members. And and it doesn't have to be an eight-hour-a-day job. We have some that are two hours a day, so.
Okay, what about my hall monitors? I'm I'm kind of concerned about the passing time, which I understand is, you know, maybe we think we can handle it and I'm hoping we can. But in secondary, students aren't necessarily as compliant as they are in elementary. So do we have enough staff in the halls to make sure kids are social distancing and moving along and not gathering together? Because I know they had kids in the buildings last week, I think it was for SAT, and there was a lot of, from what I've heard, you know. I guess the kids were excited to be there, let me put it that way. And so we're not necessarily following the guidelines as stringently as they should be. So do we have enough hall monitors in those in the secondary level?
So I can, I can tell you what the current vacancies, we have two vacancies, one at Chippewa Valley Ninth Grade Center and one at Dakota. Both of those positions have applicants. The hiring managers have been notified of that. So from an HR perspective, we have two vacancies and they have applicants. Now, I can't, I can't speak to your other, the other point you brought up, but I think Superintendent Roberts said it best. Human behavior, it's hard to, it's hard to, you break. And that's where that education piece that Mr. Sibley talked about, that PBIS, that just that reinforcing what the behavior we expect of everybody. Even our, even our community and I'm, I'm, you know, as a parent, you know, that they're following the protocols when they come to the building, to the students, to our staff. It really is a mind, it is a shifting of behavior and of the mind.
Right, and I'm sure because they have been separated for so long, it's, you know, they're gonna, it's going to be a little challenging at the beginning to keep them from being, you know, too excited, let's say, each day. I have some other questions, getting back to Mr. Kozlowski and Mr. Sibley's presentations. One of them was, so have we done an analysis on why we think our failure rate is higher? I mean, I'm assuming you're thinking that where the kids are not as engaged in the virtual or remote model.
Yeah, in my discussion with the building administrators, right now it is a high number of missing assignments. And so students are being marked down for not turning in those assignments as they traditionally have. And that is the the most common situation that we're facing. And then didn't, Mr. Queen, since I I can, I'm speaking, I can actually address a little bit of the the comment you made about SAT testing. Please keep in mind that the breaks that students have, those are, those are breaks, so they weren't headed somewhere. You know, so they did come out of a classroom where they were testing and then they didn't really have anywhere to go necessarily. So I'm sure they were a little bit more rambunctious perhaps, although I can't speak to if I wasn't in the building, but I have been in there for SAT before. And that's kind of their five minutes to exhale as they come out of either five or fifteen minute break, depending on what you was.
Okay.
To exhale, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I understand that. So, um, the the, so why do we think we have more missing assignments? Because kids just aren't engaged? How, do we think we'll have better? We'll have less missing assignments in a face-to-face model? I know that's what our community wants. I'm just trying to understand why we think the remote was not as, you know, not as did not work as effectively as it is in a classroom? Is it because the teachers are with the students face-to-face and they're giving, you know, encouraging them to turn their work in more or what?
Yeah, it's hard to predict that. It's probably different in a lot of different situations. But I do think part of it is the accountability that our students feel to their teachers when they're face-to-face. And so when you're doing work in front of your teachers and you're in person, a teacher can collect that work, right? And so they're they're there. If you're in a remote setting, you're reliant on students to submit their work.
Right.
I'm sure there's many different reasons why some of that work isn't being submitted. I would guess that students are struggling on assessments if they're in a different format. But I I can't speak specifically to the reasoning in all buildings at all levels. It's probably slightly different depending on who you ask.
Okay, um, so and then my other, I have a concern about instruction days. I know, so we're saying that the, we're having a higher failure rate, kids, you know, want to turn these things in. But in the next two months, they will have half of the amount in instruction days that they would have had if they were staying remote. So we still think that's a better model at this point, just based on our community and based on the percentage of illness and based on our staffing concerns. You know, I mean, I'm not being negative, I'm just trying to understand and make the best decision based on what's best for the students.
You know, Denise, I just want to say a few things about that.
Okay.
From the onset of this, we kind of prioritized what we thought were the best models.
Yeah.
And we kind of do that when we look across a broad spectrum of how students learn. Because we really are serving just a wide variety of students with diverse needs. So we've always said the traditional model was best. We've always considered the hybrid model to be second and remote to be the third option. And it kind of became clear to me, and I know all the levels are different, and I I can't have this experience right now in a middle or a high school, but I could today in an elementary school as I walked through Cheyenne. And I went into every classroom and I talked to teachers briefly, I kept my distance and it was quick. And I really wanted to know about instruction. And what I heard so often was, was the, was the level or the amount of attention they're able to give students. Because kids have pulled from to CVVA, because some other students are deciding the other, other ways to be educated this year outside of Chippewa Valley. I was in a lot of classrooms that had, on a, say, a Monday or Wednesday, they might have had somewhere from ten to twelve students. And it, and I just know as a former elementary teacher, you use that time well. That's such valuable small group and one-on-one time that you absolutely cannot give to kids when you have a full class. Now, I I can't, what what we really want is all the kids there. And we can't have that. And so we really believe, done correctly, the hybrid is still the best model. And it really comes down to teachers being able to have a relationship with their kids.
I agree.
You think of the feedback that a, an elementary teacher can give a parent about their child as a learner. When you have multiple opportunities during the week to sit with that child or to be with that child in a small group. So there are some advantages for certain types of learner. Maybe if the teacher interaction is, it is, isn't important and the hybrid become, or the the remote becomes a better option. But when we look across the broad spectrum of kids we serve, we think that we can serve our kids best in a hybrid.
Okay, thank you.
I I have, I have one, Mr. Bednar. It's a follow-up to something that Mr. Sibley said. In terms of the missing assignments. I guess when I first heard your presentation and I heard struggling students, I guess I, I I really assumed struggling. So my question was going to start out as what supports do we have for those struggling students if we were to return them to a classroom in whatever form? But now I'm hearing, you know, that it's missing assign, it's a missing assignment issue. As and hearing that, I have heard that there are technology issues in terms of the submission of assignments. And that people have had issues with, I've submitted my assignment, but somehow it's not getting like logged in or recognized properly or whatever is happening on the schoolagey end. So I guess, one, what are we working to do to resolve those tech issues, if anything? And two, for the students who really are struggling and the issue is more than a missing assignment issue? What supports are we putting in place for their return to the classroom, whether it be now or it be down the road?
Sure, so the the technology piece is hard to, is hard to address because I think the the student would need to be communicating with the teacher. So whether it be an email, whether through phone conversations, through Teams meetings, that is something that I believe would be resolved between the teacher and the student. I I have the utmost faith in our teachers that if, if we believe it's a technology issue, that our teachers would work with students on ways to either obtain work, take pictures of it, send it through email. So I do believe that that would be something that the teacher would be able to work through with the student if it was a technology issue. I also believe that if the teachers were experiencing that, I'm sure they have brought it to the attention of of the tech department to make sure they're working through those things. The return to a hybrid model for those students that are learning or that are struggling, again, that's where the hybrid model supports the teacher being able to work with students on a more independent basis even because they're looking at smaller class sizes than they ever have before. And so the opportunities they would be provided to really differentiate that instruction, to work with kids individually, to assign students with differentiated work based on the essential standards they've missed up to that point. Those are all things that teachers are able to do, and it doesn't mean they can't do them remotely. But I would venture to guess that most teachers will tell you that the the best kind of feedback is the immediate feedback. So being able to redirect a student in a moment or to look over a shoulder, to assist with that work is exactly what we think the hybrid model will allow for. That's a great question.
Um, I have one other question, and this is about actually the physical space. So we've heard a lot about reduced class sizes, that we're trying to keep our class sizes down less than twenty. I know last time I asked the question about, you know, if we have thirty-five tables, are kids going to have to double up at those like two-person desks? That are pretty prevalent in Dakota. Now, even at twenty kids. The reality is we we can't social distance at six feet, right? And it would be a struggle at three.
Sure, yeah, six feet, well, I I think three feet is is doable in a lot in most, in almost all of our cases. I I just can't a hundred percent commit to that because I'd have to go through every classroom. Six feet is not a realistic spacing that that we would have in our classrooms. But I think you would find in any secondary building that's currently running, you'll find the same thing. I mean, I know obviously districts that have thirty-some kids in a classroom right now in buildings that aren't as new as ours. And so there are situations like that occurring without a doubt. I will tell you that when I talk about, last time we talked, you did ask that question about whether or not students would be sitting at the same table. So that's one thing that I did go back to our principles with in our meetings. And I mentioned today that commitment to one table per student. What we're looking at actually is working with technology to remove certain things from classrooms, to create that space necessary and utilize tables that we haven't used in the past in our classrooms so that kids would have their own space to really try to eliminate that entirely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions by the board?
Well, I I have another one, Mr. Bednar, but it might be off, a little bit off topic. Last time we also discussed cleaning supplies and proper labeling of cleaning supplies. Has that been resolved? And if so, how was that resolved?
I'm, I'm not sure. Adam, were you working with, I'm not sure who was working with the custodial staff and that to kind of
Yeah.
work that issue through?
Yes, Superintendent Roberts, yes, Ms. Biden. So Scott and I, Mr. Sutterland and I, we're working with Larry Kleinhands, our supervisor of custodial services. There there are labels, so part of the issue is we are, we are diluting a mixture for cleaning purposes. And some of the labels that were being confused by people that were getting the fact sheets on it, they were reading the the concentrated formula. And obviously, in a concentrated formula, the fact sheets are, you know, much more alarming than when you dilute it. And one of the things that we walk through is making sure that the proper fact sheets are out there. And so we've attached that, I've sent some communication out to our association leadership, letting them know the fact sheet that we have. Additionally, many of the common warning labels on our, the the fact sheet on the diluted cleaner that we are using are similar warnings that you would find on common household cleaners and cleaners that have been in our school systems for a long, long time. So additionally, part of that is a little bit of explicit education to all employees about our cleaners that we are using that we're passing out because again, while Lysol wipes, we're not using Lysol wipes, we're using a different cleaner. But Lysol wipes have been in classrooms for a long time. They weren't distributed by our custodial staff. So again, explicitly reminding staff members to keep those, you know, chemical, those chemicals, those cleaners up and out of the reach of small children. You know, common things like i- if you do get it in your eyes, that you need to wash your eyes thoroughly and those type of things. As well as some basic instructions on how to use those those cleaners. Because unlike the common household cleaner, there are directions that need to be given and followed. So my long answer to your question is, yes, we we have been in communication with association leadership. We do have appropriate fact sheets. We are looking at another type of cleaner and we're in the, the, we're in the process of gathering information. So the current cleaner that we're using has a ten-minute, they call dwell time, so it has to stay on the surface for ten minutes. And, you know, the more that we've looked into that, obviously that presents an issue at our more, more, more at our secondary level when you have a six-minute hall passing time. So we've talked with that cleaning company and they actually have on the same chemical line or the same product line a chemical that can sit for three minutes and be wiped off and is just as effective as the ten-minute one. So Scott and I are working with Mr. Kleinhands and I securing that product. First of all, making sure that it's what, what they said it is and then making sure we can secure that prior to a potential return if the board takes action on that for the ninth of November.
And so we're not, so if I heard this correctly, we're not using wipes, we're using some kind of spray?
Correct.
Okay, and who's, and so who's responsible for cleaning? Like as kids are leaving, they get a squirt on their desk and told to wipe off before they move to their next class? Or who's doing the wiping between classes?
So we we have, we have talked with the association about the the need for them to help with light cleaning. And this is considered what we would consider light cleaning. We we cannot, we can't secure the number of wipes that it would take for a high school, you know, or a secondary. You're talking wiping desk six times a day times that number of students. And Scott and I did the math on it, it is an amazing amount of wipes. We still have to buy a bunch of paper towel and things like that, but it's certainly less than buying the wipe. So in some cases, students can participate. And I I can tell you, my students, my children are in a different school district and they did return to a modified face-to-face. And they are wiping desks, but my one child, my my one child is not wiping the dust down because she can't, physically can't. And so in that case, either another student helps or the teacher will assist that process. And we're, again, we're being very cautious in what we're, what we're looking at and what we're going to ask students to do. We want to make sure that obviously by the the fact sheet of the chemical that that's something they can do. But again, I just want to highlight that the chemical composition and the fact sheet is similar to that of Lysol wipes, which for years we have asked students to use what Lysol wipes to wipe down a desk. And so if we do ask students, they can of course say, you know, feel comfortable, but it is same chemicals that we would use that, have used for years.
Sure, thank you. And I apologize, I do have one more question. Choir and band, what do, what would those look like in a hybrid model? Or bringing those kids back now?
Yeah, that might be a Paul question, I think, choir and band.
I can, I can take it, Mr. Kozlowski. Yeah, well, so we're following the recommendations that have come out, we've been
Yeah, well, so, um, we're following the recommendations that have come out. We've been following the progression as those have developed. Um, really, there's not going to be much singing in choir, if any. Rehearsals are going to have to be limited to thirty minutes or less. Uh, class can be held outside if they want to. They need to distance properly. If they're singing, they need to wear masks. Um, band, again, the distancing, there's additional distance for the trombone. And we're also in the process of trying to get, they're called bell covers, which is like picture a mask for the end of the instrument. Um, so that if they do have brief rehearsals, the, the instruments will be covered, um, with those, so.
Okay. And just, um, like, I, I, I mean, today was kind of cold and rainy and we're looking at another couple of weeks, um, legitimately doing these outside things are not going to be possible. I, I think that's fair, right?
Yeah, absolutely. There, we're not suggesting that they would do it every day. It, it may be an option on some days. Um, but in talking to some of the band and choir teachers, they're finding ways to do things differently. Um, some of the choir teachers have suggested that they're not going to do much singing in the classroom. They're going to do it at home. Uh, and they're going to do some of the music theories kind of things in class. So uh, there's ways that they can still have learning progress, it'll, it will just look different than what it has.
Okay, thank you.
Questions by the board? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Roberts, I appreciate the information and the presentations, uh, this evening that you've, you've given us and all the information that you've, uh, accumulated and distributed to the board this evening and, and throughout this whole process since last spring. So, okay, if there's nothing else, Mr. Roberts, we, we'll move on.
Mr. Bednard, I just want to make, can I make just one comment, it's not a question. Um, before the community speaks, so they can respond if they want to. Um, I am a proponent of students helping during a time when we are in this together. So I hope these students are encouraged to help. I want them to be safe. Of course, I don't want them to work with any toxic materials, but I also don't want the staff to have to work with toxic materials. Um, but having said that, um, I think kids pitching in to help is a, is a positive thing. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Anything further from the board? Mr. Roberts, uh, we all set?
We are all set. I, I would like to, um, if I could, just could I do one thing before we go on? Because I, I just feel really bad. Um, I just want to introduce Amanda Snyder. If I could do that quickly because she's at waiting and she's, she is, um, going to be up for being hired tonight. So can I just take one minute with this, Mr. Bednar?
Absolutely.
So I, I just think that Amanda, if you could unmute.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Amanda is, is going to be up tonight to be, um, hired with a board motion as our new dietitian. And I really would like Amanda to just, Amanda, could you tell a little bit about yourself now? And then you're free to go because this could go on a while and I don't think you need to stay, so.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll have to contact you later to tell you if it went through, but you can still, you can still just tell a little bit about yourself and then we can kind of let you go, okay? So why don't you go ahead?
All right, thank you. Well, hello, everyone. Thank you to the board for having me here tonight. That, it's very educational. Um, it, it did answer a lot of the questions that I had coming in, um, to Chippewa, so thank you. Um, so yes, I am a registered dietitian. I went to Western Michigan and I worked in K-12 sales for a few years. So that's really where I started in school food service. I went to Sarasota, Florida for my dietetic internship at Sarasota School District, which is the only K-12-based dietetic internship in the nation. So I was one of three dieticians that year, or three interns that year in their program. So I got to learn a lot and just be fully immersed in the school system and, um, moved back to Michigan. Florida was not for me. Um, and that's when I got back, I passed my exam in October of twenty eighteen. And dietitian positions at school districts, um, are very slim in Michigan. So I have been at Henry Ford, um, as a weight management dietitian for about a year and a half since then, which has been great, nice to be on the clinical side, but I knew that my goals of being in K-12 and more food service management, um, was not ending. So I kept looking and when I saw this position with Chippewa, it just seemed like the perfect opportunity for everything that I have been, um, you know, doing in these past few years. So, thank you, and, yeah.
Okay, so Amanda, we're going to move on with the, um, agenda now and we're going to release you. Because we have, we have a long segment here before we get to where you, you're, the motion for your approval would come up. So, um, we'll let you know tomorrow, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Bednard. And I just, I didn't think she should have to wait this long. So why don't you, uh, I'm all set. If you want to move forward, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Uh, this time we'll move into, uh, Dee from the community. Um, and we have a number of folks that have signed up to speak to the board this evening. Um, I have fifteen at this time. Uh, Ms. Montier, what are you, uh, out there?
Yes, I am. Um, our first comments from the community tonight are from Mrs. Gerard, and I just let her into the meeting. I think she should be ready to speak.
Before we start with Miss Gerard, I'd like to, uh, run through the, uh, the meeting participation, uh, uh, rules from the board. Um, and we've had a great, uh, conversation with our community this past, uh, fall and summer, uh, through this portion of our meetings. And it's been a very appropriate way for our community to come out and speak to us. And we, and we, it's been very respectful. We just want to keep it that way. Um, there's a lot of emotions flowing with decisions being made, especially tonight now. And we just want folks to, just to maintain, please share your thoughts with us. Um, the rules as far as it goes for the meeting, I mean, particularly every time before we have from the community, so it's on the same page, understands what the, uh, expectations are. Uh, first of all, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to a five-minute duration. So uh, when you get through about four minutes, I'll interrupt you and give you a one-minute warning to close things up. Um, participants shall direct all comments to the board, not to staff or other participants. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. Um, complaints against identifiable, identifiable school personnel may not be expressed in an open meeting. Such complaints should be first be submitted in writing to the board and aired in open or closed session according to the wish of the persons involved. As the presiding officer, uh, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Uh, request, uh, any, any individual to leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum. I may request the assistance of law enforcement. I may call for a recess or adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to warrant subaction and waive these rules with the approval of the board when necessary for the protection of privacy or the administration of the board's business. So, those are some ground rules. Okay, I think, uh, Ms. White, we have Ms. Ms. Gerard, uh, standing by?
We do.
Okay, Ms. Gerard, are you, are you out there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you fine. Please share your comments with the board this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I hesitated to speak again. Quite frankly, it's exhausting and hard not to wonder if anyone is listening. But continue to be inspired to be a voice for hundreds of families in our community that feel as I do. Though I know hybrid is still a struggle for some, I still stand by it being a good start. And I am trying to see the blessing in something I can't control. There has never been a time, nor may never be a time, our kids will have such small class sizes and individualized attention. Hopefully after we get through all of this, there is such a benefit seen by CVS admin, you will do everything in your power to bring our class sizes down. Also, even though more complex, I encourage you to keep making these plans for our middle and high schoolers. I was struggling with the idea of my high schoolers not having five days of instruction, but a couple of teachers in our conferences said they strongly believe these older children need to have face-to-face time no matter what that looks like, and some is better than none. At this point, before transitioning elementary to five-day, I am asking you again to reevaluate mask mandates within our district, especially for elementary-age children. Yes, numbers are up, meaning absolutely nothing, because death rates are way down and testing is way up. Every week, I have asked you to dig deep to find the truth in a world where truth is hard to find. Yet I see the same copied and pasted letters circulating in regards to back-to-school plans and procedures, none of them including much in the way of solid, meaningful stats and facts. I know all of you are very educated, smart people to be in the positions you are. I continue to hope that you are there to advocate and do what's best for our children. I hope that your researching is unbiased and you put your fears and politics aside, but this doesn't always appear to be the case. There is obsessing over the wrong numbers, in my opinion. Besides the decades of previous anti-mask research being ignored, there are new studies coming out regularly showing masks are actually doing more harm than good. The WHO guidance previously published that cloth mask masks were not ma- recommended in any circumstance. The popular Dr. Fauci himself said when in the middle of an outbreak, masks might make people feel better, but often have unintended consequences. A CDC study reviewed ten different randomized clinical trials worldwide on highly infectious respir- respiratory virus transmission and showed no significant reduction with the use of masks. The newest study conducted by the CDC showed the majority of people contracting COVID wear masks always, go figure. There are zero studies, though, showing long-term medical or psychological effects of forced masking children. More people have died than ever in human history of suicide this year, and yes, it's more than we have lost to COVID. Again, a reminder, zero-to-nineteen-year-olds have a ninety-nine point nine-nine-seven percent survival rate. Studies are showing kids are not at all likely to shed the virus and pass it, disproving the theory that they are going to infect all of the teachers. And a mask does nothing to prevent the extremely small chance it would be take to pass, considering the fact that the virus particle is one one-thousandth, one one-thousandth the size of a hair and goes right through the fibers of a mask. Don't you find it odd that it doesn't matter what kind of mask we use, where we get it, how long we have used it? Last I checked, they do not have to be disposed of in a biohazard container. We are making absurd mandates and life changes based on a virus that, for the most part, we need to be tested to even know we have it. At best, you have the illusion of safety in the exchange for seemingly tolerable infringements of freedom, and at worst, compromising our children's health with lower oxygen levels. Bacteria-filled masks stuck to their face all day and cause, causes difficult muffled communication between children and their teachers, especially for children learning to read. I keep hearing that you're making your decisions guided by the Macomb County Health Department. I have personally called them and talked to several, including one of the heads of communicable diseases. She and others let, let on that they do not mandate your decisions. She encouraged me to file a waiver with CVS based on a situation with one of my five children in the district. She said she would expect the school to work with us. I did so with a doctor's note and it was immediately denied by our elusive district nurse who doesn't have a contact number and doesn't respond to emails. I was directed by CVS admin to leave a voicemail for CVS HR, to which I received no response.
We'll give you that one-minute warning. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, okay. This seems completely unacceptable. There was a survey on a CVS parents' Facebook page. Over two hundred parents said they would like to see no masks at the desk, compared to thirty opposers. There is a darkness the likes of which I have never seen. Let's be a part of the solution rather than the problem. Shut up and mask solves nothing. Be a voice and a light for our kids. Teach them by example not to live in fear. Don't just accept what you're being fed by your favorite news station or direction from those like-minded echo chambers. Do the legwork and research and stand up for what's right. There are school district, districts in our state doing just that. I pray daily for all of you and take relief in knowing God is in control, but I challenge those of you listening to help fight for what's right. Parents, we are stakeholders. Please speak up. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gerard, for your comments this evening. Okay, Ms. White, we have, uh, next up?
Our next speaker is Mr. St. Lauren.
Mr. St. Lauren, are you out there? Mr. St. Lauren?
He's muted.
Okay, Mr. St. Lauren, if you're on, I'll check if you're muted. Mr. St. Lauren? Okay, perhaps we'll come back to, to Mr. St. Lauren. Ms. White, if you could go on to the next.
Yeah, we'll leave him in the meeting in case he comes back. Um, the next speaker wasn't on the original list for the Board of Ed, but, um, Mason Barrett. I'm gonna go ahead and admit base, Mason.
Mason Barrett?
Looks like his audio is connecting.
Whoa, Mason Barrett? Mason Barrett?
He's on mute also.
Can you hear me?
Mason Barrett?
Can you hear me?
Is this Mason Barrett?
Yes, it is. How you doing?
Yes, this is Mr. Bednard. Yes, uh, we can hear you fine. Now, if you want to go ahead and, uh, address the board, please.
All righty. I want us to go back to school for so many reasons. I am a student at Chippewa Valley High School. The virus is here to stay. It isn't going to go anywhere anytime soon. We need to put faith over fear. Us making this, us fearing this will make it only worse. You know, that suicide rates have skyrocketed, even domestic violence in families and homes. We need our safe place back. The kids that have a bad environment and families need to have hope in a safe place in school. Kids, uh, kids that went, uh, kids that went to school felt safe and felt they had a place to get away from things that hurt them in that home. This needs to stop. If you keep putting us aside at school, you will only hurt us and other kids and families more. This is my generation, my future generation, my peers. It's very, very important. We need to do better, not just on a computer screen. It's not learning. Having a teacher making connection to kids in person and making a relationship is learning. A lot of kids these days, on a computer, don't learn the best because all they can do is sleep or they don't turn or work early because they're not motivated. In school, you have a routine. You can wake up, you go to school, you have a routine. So I'm asking you to let us go back because you all know this virus is never going away. It's not going to go anywhere. The CDC even said eighty-five percent of the masks don't actually help. They actually make it worse, a recent study. If I can go to work, and other kids can go to work and go to places, then we and myself can go back to school. Let us go back. We've been away for too long. Online only makes it worse and it makes it terrible. I am not going to let this tape make me, I'm not gonna let this make me have fear. I'm going to, I'm going to have faith and hope and not let it scare me. Because this virus is bad. You know that. But I think we can make some, a lot more adjustments and a lot more sacrifices too, as I've seen. I know we can go back. If the elementary kids can go back, then so can we. I feel like there's so much hope, but I feel like a lot of kids don't have hope because they don't, they can't go back. They're not in school. We've been away for almost a year from our classrooms. We need to be in the classroom. We need to have that connection with their, with the students and have a social life and teachers sitting in a, in your room. Not having a social life with kids, having your mute, mic muted and no, and your camera off, that's not social. That is, that's, that's not doing anything for anybody.
Okay, Mr. Barrett, I'm sorry, just one-minute warning, please, if you could wrap it up.
So all I'm asking for you is for a lot of parents' sake and my sake, is open up the schools. We have a lot of time to make a lot more adjustments, but I feel like we need to go back. And suicide rates have, have skyrocketed really bad, more than COVID nineteen has. So I ask you, please, from just the bottom of my heart and every, and everyone else to have faith and no fear, to make us go back to school. And, and keep us in their hearts, because I think we do need to go back. I think we do need that hope and that little salvation of saying, okay, we can go back. We can actually have a social life and sit in our rooms and feel depressed and upset all the time.
Okay, thank, well, thank you, Barrett. Uh, we much appreciate your comments as one of our students. Uh, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you so much.
Okay, all right, Ms. White?
Um, Mr. St. Lauren is still in the meeting. Let's see if he's available to unmute.
Mr. St. Lauren, or are you out there?
Okay, we can leave him in the Okay, we can leave him in the meeting and hopefully he'll be back. In the meantime, we have Kim Johnston. And she is also.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Ms. Johnston. Welcome to the meeting. We appreciate you joining us this evening. Please share your comments with the board.
Okay, so my name is Kim Johnston. I am a teacher at Chippewa Valley High School for the last thirteen years. In addition to being a teacher, my husband and I have school of choice. Our kids out of Utica Schools and into Chippewa Valley Schools because we believe in the district so much. So we have made it not only a part of, obviously, my life, but, you know, part of the lives of our children. So I have some concerns about returning to the hybrid model. First, I want to say, and everyone has said this, I want nothing more than to be in person with my students. I miss my kids. I miss seeing them. I miss goofing around with them in the hallways. I miss talking to them and building those relationships. And I know the teachers are doing what they can to build those relationships in, you know, this remote setting. Our kids have been working really hard trying to figure out how to do school this way. They have been doing school the traditional way for years. And then, out of necessity, obviously, we changed it, and they're just getting the hang of it. It has been six weeks. I've seen my kids that were struggling in the beginning turn it around, and they are finally understanding, okay, this is how this works. I think to change it now is a disservice to our kids. I want nothing more than to see their faces. I was so happy on SAT day to see them, to see my former kids. But I think changing things now, we are not ready. I mean, simply, I don't feel, as a teacher, that I have been given enough direction on what content coverage looks like. A lot of the things that were used to explain how it will work for elementary are being used to explain how it will work for high school, and that is just not the same. I have a pacing. I teach both AP classes, and I also teach regular classes, social studies classes. My ability to cover content has very little to do with how many students are in my room because it has always been a reality that there are going to be thirty-five students in my room. The way that I teach, I do not have disruptions that do not allow me to get through content. So I would have to either do double content, which is way too long for kids to listen because we've already talked about best practice is not forty, fifty minutes of kids listening to teachers' lecture. Some of the suggestions of how they would work together, it's a small group. I can't do small group. We do not have the technology for me to lecture and then have them have their computers in the room to do the school-age assignments because our computers do not work in the room in our buildings. So then my students will have to go home and work on assignments that I talked about the day before. If we're talking about failure rates, it would be worse, in my opinion, in a hybrid situation. I see my kids every day.
Johnson, sorry to interrupt. Just one minute left, please, if you.
Okay. I see my kids every day right now, and I can say, hey, man, you didn't turn that in yesterday. You know, you need more time? What's up? Send them a message. Send them a remind. Send them all these things. So I think this will be harder on my students. I also, if we do happen to go to the hybrid situation, I think the Friday needs to be readjusted. I would like to wait for second semester. That's my piece. Thank you so much, and I appreciate the board, and I do appreciate our administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnston, for your comments and for being one of our great educators in Chippewa schools. Okay, we'll be on Ms. White.
The next speaker on our list is Sharista Simmons-Wilcox. I'm not seeing her in the lobby, though, so we'll skip to our next community member, who is Kanam Sataro.
Kanam Sataro? Kanam Sataro?
You're in the meeting. If you'll go ahead and unmute, I believe it's star six, we'll unmute you on the phone.
Man Sataro? Hello, Ms. Kanam Sataro?
Hi, I'm a student that goes.
Okay, yes. We can hear you now, very fine. So thank you for joining us this evening. Go ahead and please share your comments with the board.
Okay. Hi, I'm a student that goes to the International Academy of Macomb, and I was wondering. I'm so sorry. I was concerned about going back because I reside with people that are vulnerable to the virus, and it's unfair for me to go and risk my and my family's safety. Sorry. Also, school is already stressful, so the Zooms are better because the teachers let them out early or let us out early. And while IAM keeps their cameras on, the Chip kids don't. In addition, online school isn't terrible. And I understand that people want in-person interactions and they miss their friends and stuff, but we can FaceTime. People still go out, regardless of the pandemic. And they do social distance, and that's okay. Like, it's okay to. I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Look. I just thought that it's not exactly smart or safe to go back right now, especially with elections and stuff and the conflict right now. I'm scared that some of us will get hate crimed or it's just unsafe. And with, like, the whole mask policy, I know that there's going to be people that are going to cough or sneeze on purpose to leave early or scare others, like, as a joke or something. Some people are going to take mask breaks or, like, get close and break social distancing rules, and I'm not going to feel comfortable with that. Not just that with the masks. It's, like, hard to understand what people say or, like, it's hard to talk in them. So it's just kind of annoying, and there's no point in really going back. And then, my main concern is with the IAM. Chip shares a building. Like, we share a building with them, and it's already an extremely small school, and we have, like, a bunch of kids. And with, like, the Chip kids, it's going to be too much and it's going to be overwhelming. And we're not going to be able to apply, like, our social distancing, like, policies or be able to, like, control that. And there's no immediate exchange. There's no immediate need for students to go back because, it's like, we don't have out-of-class clubs or it's just, you're not really missing out on anything besides the sounds of conversations and just seeing people in person. Like, you can already do that through Zoom. And plus, with the masks, it's harder because maybe some people are just missing people, like, in person or they're just missing smiles, but you can't see anything with the mask on. And plus, you can't be by anyone, really, because of the rules. And it's just useless to risk your own safety for something temporary. Also, having this many kids in the, like, building for us, it can pent up emotions and quarantine lacking social. And, like, with quarantine lacking social interactions, we'll have a disastrous ending by sending them back during the election results. I can almost guarantee that there will be hate crimes and, like, hateful language within the student body. This benefits the students none because they are much more interested within the student. They are much more interested in what's going on with peers and their morals around them rather than learning with the remote plan.
Sataro, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Just, I wanted to give you one-minute warning. Please continue.
Okay, I'm done.
All right. Well, thank you so much for sharing your comments. It's always good to hear from our students also. They're a part of this also, this community. Okay, Ms. White, we have the next community member wants to speak.
The next speaker on your list is not in our lobby, so we'll skip down to Yasmin Mackelwitz. I apologize if I said that wrong.
Ms. Mackelwitz, or I'll just say Yasmin? Ms. Mackelwitz, are you out there? Ms. Mackelwitz, are you out there?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi. Yes, we hear you loud and clear. Thanks so much for joining us this evening. Go ahead and please share your comments with the board.
Hi, my name is Yasmin. First, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm a mother of four. I'm here to comment on transition to hybrid instruction. My younger three kids have been in person since August in private school. They are happy kids that are growing, learning, and thriving. Their schools have all the CDC measures in place and have been managing it well. My oldest son is a senior attending school within Chippewa Valley. He's a very high achiever and all-A student who's a strong athlete and successful in everything he does. He has a challenging year ahead of him, taking all advanced classes and will be taking exams in the spring that will determine how many college credits he'll earn for the fall. He's in the process of applying to colleges. But aside from all the normal pressures of being a senior, he's in front of his computer at least ten hours a day, seven hours for the normal school day, and at least three hours for homework. He's isolated at home alone most of the day with hardly enough time to leave the house for lunch. He ends the day mentally exhausted. Over the course of the last few months, it's been increasingly more difficult for him. I'm not speaking from a grade standpoint. Although his grades have dropped to Bs, he's still doing well. I'm speaking from the standpoint of mental health. Remote learning has taken a huge toll on my son. Over the course of the last two months, I've seen him go from a very motivated kid who likes to play football outside with his siblings, watch sports, play sports, and interact with his family. The stress of being in front of the screen all day has really impacted his mental health. Now he wants to leave the house after he finishes his remote learning because he's home all day. Instead of feeling like home is a safe haven, he sees it as a study jail, which is sad but true. Also, in his mind, he's so overwhelmed with all the stress of homework to do after a full day in front of the screen, he finds it hard to be able to relax. It's hard to turn off his mind. I'm concerned about his mental health. He's now showing signs of both anxiety and depression. This is mental illness. I'm not the only parent in the district experiencing this. In fact, there are hundreds of other students having the same struggles. In an effort to protect our children from a virus, we've caused other problems that will have lasting consequences. I understand you're trying to keep the kids safe from COVID-19, but I urge you to look at the situation as a whole and ask yourself what "safe" really means. Safe does not only mean the lack of COVID-19. My son has mental illness now, and mental illness is not a safe condition. This condition is out of my control as a parent, and that's why I'm speaking here now. I understand that schools needed to be closed in the spring when we were in phase three, but now schools are allowed to open. We're doing much better in regards to treating the virus. More and more cases are mild, and hospitals now have good treatment options that have been successful. We've made leaps and bounds in responding. We also have protocols in place to keep students safe in the classroom. These measures have worked in neighboring districts, and they can work here. There needs to be more metrics other than the number of cases. The death rate has been flat in recent months, which is indicative that the cases, the increase of cases is less severe than the spring. The teenage years are hard enough to navigate without the stresses of online learning. It's really pushing our teens to the brink. They're crying, exhibiting signs of anxiety, losing the joy they once had for life, and also taking away their motivation to try hard. When you take away the classroom, you also take away their socialization, their laughter and their smiles when they pass a friend in the hall, their motivation to get up and start a new day, their routine, their drive, their joy, their enthusiasm, and ultimately, their health and well-being. Kids aren't robots, and there is a reason pediatricians tell us that we need to limit screen time to two hours a day.
Ms. Mackelwitz, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Just, I want to give you a one-minute warning, so if you want to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. It's for the reasons I just described. Our students can't wait until January. They're holding on by a thread, and they need to be in the classroom for their mental health. I understand that not all students feel this way, but the majority of kids do need to be in the classroom and want to. Please give the option to the parents. Please, board, hear my plea. Please vote to start hybrid on November ninth. Our kids are depending on you. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mackelwitz, for your comments this evening. Share your thoughts with the board. Okay, Ms. White, what do you have next?
Our next member from the community.
Hello?
Ms. Steele, you may want to mute the other device you're listening to the meeting.
Yeah. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are unmuted.
I'm sorry, what's your, what's the last name?
Steele. Are you there?
Yes, we hear you. I'm sorry. Can you repeat your last name, please?
Last name is Steele, S-T-E-E-L-E.
Okay. Okay, please go ahead and share your comments with the board.
Okay, as I said, my name is Carolyn Steele. My son attends Algonquin in the eighth grade, which at this time I feel is very important, getting ready to going to high school. This is an impossible task. Most of the kids are losing. Parents and teachers are both frustrated and struggling. My son struggles already when, you know, like, last year, when it was face-to-face. Now, not that I want to brag about this, but when I'm seeing all Fs, every single class, even banned. Come on, who gets an F in banned? These kids need to be in school. When my son comes to me with tears, something's wrong. When a teacher tells you that she has twenty-six students in one class and eighteen of those students are failing, there's a problem. I asked her how many students when, you know, it was normal, and she said, hmm, one to two, maybe three per class, maybe about six for all of her classes. That's ridiculous. When you have eighteen of the students failing in one class. I don't want my son or any of these students to fail. I feel we need to be back to face-to-face as soon as possible. The longer we wait, the harder it's going to be for them to catch up. These students are getting more frustrated, which will stop them from learning. Then to top it all, they get out of class early. How about use that time for questions or review or what was that instead of having twenty to thirty minutes to just sit around and do nothing? I am here for my son, but it's hard to help with him when I don't even understand what's going on. I'm a successful business owner and feel that I'm pretty smart. But when these kids are being rushed through a class and let out early and failing, something's wrong. Not to mention learning how all of the schoolology and all the other stuff works. So let's add on this to their learning each class, too. Learning this computer technology is frustrating enough. Even some of the board members are even having a hard time with doing it this way. Imagine how the students are doing. Who wants to take the long way to learn something or teach something? Seems the smart thing to do is the quickest way so it's not frustrating to neither the teachers or the students. People talk that are afraid to come back, let them stay home. But the students that, you know,
I'm sorry, Ms. Steele.
desperately need to come back.
I'm sorry, Ms. Steele. I'll give you that one-minute warning. Please continue. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay. But the students that desperately need to come back, which seem to be half of the students, let them come back. Maybe we can still record, do something, so we can do both? That's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Steele, for your comments this evening. Much appreciated. Okay, Ms. White, can we move on to our next community member?
We can. Mr. Tom Sokol is our next community member.
Mr. Sokol. Sokol, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we hear you loud and clear. Please share your comments with the board.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. I do want to compliment Mr. Sibley as well as all the administrators.
Mr. Sokol, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We cannot mention individual employees' names.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you. No problem. I thought that was only if it was in a negative manner, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So I do want to recognize all of the administrators in charge of the logistics at Chippewa Valley Schools. They obviously have a difficult job. When I was watching the arrows on the hallway floors, I could just only imagine the type of tasks that they have to take on. So kudos to all of them. I wanted to talk on a few points here. One of them is about Facebook and social media and around transparency. And I brought this to multiple board members' attentions. But over the last three years, there's been multiple times when there's a post made by Chippewa Valley Schools, so the Chippewa Valley Schools Facebook page, that they're deleting comments. They're deleting comments residence, they're deleting entire posts. And I think in a spirit of transparency, sometimes it's tough feedback, but I think Chippewa Valley Schools owes it to the community to leave those comments up. I understand that there's residents that are using profanity and other types of inappropriate language, and unfortunately, that does happen sometimes. We don't need that on Chippewa Valley Schools page, but it's inappropriate for Chippewa Valley Schools to have, to allow this to go on. It's been going on for a few years. It happened recently after I brought it to the board's attention. So they really need to take a look at that because it really hurts the overall reputation of Chippewa Valley Schools when they engage in that. One thing I just wanted to point out as well is there seems to be this heightened concern, which we all understand, but other school districts are making it happen, okay? With full-time face-to-face. The city of Detroit, the Land School Schools, which services some overlapping municipalities here, and they're having success. And if they're having success, why are they having success earlier than us? I mean, you saw the data today. Five to six times the failure rate. And I'm going to keep talking about that today over the five minutes because that's just not acceptable. The sooner we can end a five to six times the failure rate in middle schools, I have a middle schooler at Seneca, the better. So our district's failing by being late to the game here, we're failing our students. I mean, five to six times the failure rate. I don't know how everybody's not cringing over this, and everybody should be kicking themselves in the you-know-what for not getting this done earlier. Another thing I want to talk about is my FOIA request. I made a FOIA request for this board for all documentation and metrics going from March to the end of September for data being used around this COVID analysis to make this decision. And I wasn't given anything. I was given internet links. But then today, we have data from October being presented around new cases only, new cases only. So it was either a situation where there was no data used, and you guys were using Hocus Pocus for all those months, you're making decisions and voting in these meetings, or, and you just came up with metrics all of a sudden, or there was a decision just not to be transparent in my FOIA request. So I asked for all documentation used in the decisions by the administration and the board, and I wasn't given it. So now moving on to this new cases analysis by Dr. Roberts today. I think it's an insult to our community, to the educated members on this board.
Mr. Sokol, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just gave you one-minute warnings if you want to close it up. Please continue.
Thank you. We're not looking at, we're not looking at deaths. I know that's morbid. We're not looking at hospitalizations, and we're not looking at the total of, total number of cases. How are we, in good conscience, presenting data that's not using the total number of cases? I mean, that is just not responsible. It's not paying a true story to the residents, and it's just not fair to the community to portray data in the way that we're doing it. It's just not responsible. So I want to remind the board that you're supposed to represent the entire community, not part of the community, not a segment of the community, but the entire community. And more than half the community wants kids back in school. They want them hybrid, they want a face-to-face, and we need to make that happen. So I'm looking for the board's support in getting our kids back to school and not delaying this anymore. Five to six times the failure rate is not acceptable to our community. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Sokol, for your comments this evening. Okay, moving on, Ms. White.
Our next community member is Stephen Gaitens, and he is in the meeting. If you'd like to go ahead and unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear, Mr. Gaitens.
Steve, Steve, Steve Gaitens.
Gaitens, okay.
Yeah, hi, yeah. My name's Steve Gaitens, and I'm a resident of Clit Township. I'm also a public school teacher in a neighboring county. You know, first of all, it was great to hear some of the students on this call and to see them engaged. You know, that speaks really highly of your staff, your school community, you know, to see that type of engagement. I also want to speak out for anyone else that is listening to this board meeting that's on this side. You know, as an educator, you know, we try to follow facts and science. And any kindergartner, if you explain it to them, they can tell you that we wear the mask to protect the person next to us. So I just got to get that out there. I didn't think I'd have to say anything like that, but, you know, different people are coming to the table with different realities right now. So I understand this is a very stressful time for our community, for students, families, teachers, the other staff members, just, you know, community members in general. There's been a type of trauma and fear and insecurity that has come about during this event. And that's because we're in the middle of a global pandemic. We're in the middle of a health crisis. And that's just the reality. I heard one of the board members state that one of the staff members was on a ventilator. I've heard from other employees of the district that there have been multiple cases, multiple cases of staff members and students throughout the district. And I hope there is some transparency in that where that's been reported. I've not seen that personally, so I won't speak to it. But I've also heard from staff members that, you know, they're not entirely confident in the current safety protocols, being engaged with the current model. As far as rooms being cleaned, there was another point made up tonight about, you know, staff are going to do some of that light cleaning. Well, if you have a spray that is currently 10 minutes, I know you said it would move to three minutes for disinfectant, but even three minutes on 20 desks, having to spray it, wait three minutes, walk around, and then wipe them down in between a six-minute passing period, all while these teachers are working to try to get ready for their next classes, you know, serve those students, that's another type of stress that is going to affect this community. You know, we talk, you know, as school employees, we are mandatory reporters, you know, when concerning child welfare. And one of the things we have to look at with child welfare is their families in that greater community. And right now, we do have a number of students who will be put at risk by returning to school. We're going to have their family life returned to risk by returning to school. And I understand there's a lot of drawbacks of not going face-to-face. I know every teacher I work with, we want to be back face-to-face. You know, that we want to be with our kids. But again, we're in the middle of a global pandemic. This is something that hasn't happened in our lifetimes. It's something we're going to have to adjust to and figure out over the, you know, maybe the next year.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Gaitens. I just want to give you that one-minute warning, so please continue. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yep, thank you. I appreciate it. You know, so, you know, it's something, it's something we're going to have to figure out. And I look at, you know, what you're doing with this virtual model. You know, I work with students with autism, and when we look at different interventions for our students, you know, we focus in on the intervention, and we try to take data for our efficacy. Are we following through with fidelity? But what we don't do is we don't abandon the intervention right away. You know, we take the time to look at it, and we adjust it as needed. And I think maybe a better use of the time, at least the rest of this school year, would be to look at the virtual model, see how we can engage with students more. You know, see how we can up those assignment tournaments, you know? See how we can find ways to reach out. You know, many of these teachers have worked for a career to build their craft. Let's give it a little more time to build these virtual skills and see if we can have, you know, a good outcome that not only assists our students with their education, but also helps the safety of our students and our community. So thank you very much for letting me speak tonight, and I hope you all have a nice night.
Thank you for your comments this evening, Mr. Gaitens. Okay, Ms. White, we have another community member who wants to speak.
We do. Our next community member is Andrea Granata.
Ms. Granata?
Hello. Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the board tonight and speaking this evening with concerns of the proposed hybrid plan at the high school level. I have two children that attend Dakota High School. My son is a senior and my daughter is a junior. I'm concerned with the lack of direct instruction in the proposed hybrid plan and have a few questions. With only two to three days a week of direct instruction, will the full curriculum be covered? Will the students be college-ready and be prepared for the SATs? My son is in the AP Physics. I'm concerned that the material won't be covered in time for the test or if he's going to be responsible for teaching it himself. If he is responsible for teaching it himself, will he have access to a teacher if he is on Group A and only meets on Monday and Wednesday? Another concern I have is being quarantined. If a student is quarantined due to a positive case, will they have any instruction for the two weeks? I feel the proposed hybrid plan is a step backwards. I strongly feel five days of synchronous instruction is the most beneficial for students. I know we're in the midst of, and there isn't one perfect solution. I'm wondering if a hybrid plan with five days of direct instruction has been considered. Is it possible to split the day into AM PM, similar to the half-day kindergarten program from several years ago? However, the afternoon students would attend remote? So Group A would attend Monday, Wednesday in person in the morning, Tuesday, Thursday remote in the afternoon. Group B would attend Monday, Wednesday remote in the afternoon, and Tuesday, Thursday in person in the morning. Monday through Thursday, all classes would be 25 to 30 minutes for in-person and remote. Both groups would be remote on Fridays, full day for the whole period. Classes would only be halftime, but they would get direct instruction every day. During the current remote learning, many teachers have been keeping the students online for 30 minutes of direct instruction. Also, if a student did have to quarantine, they wouldn't have to miss any days of direct instruction because they can always join their class in the afternoon. I know transportation may be an issue. I thought about that, but then again, it did work for the half-day kindergarten several years ago. To conclude, I feel five days direct instruction is most beneficial for the students, whether it be remote, hybrid with daily synchronous instruction, or five days face-to-face. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Granata, for your comments this evening. Okay, Ms. White, we have another community member that wants to speak.
We do. Next, we have Angie Simon. And if you'd like to go ahead and use star six to unmute, we are ready to hear your comments.
Hello, Ms. Simon. Hello, Ms. Simon. Hello, Ms. Simon. Ms. Simon, hello, Ms. Simon.
Hi, sorry.
We can hear you loud and clear. Please send your comments, please share your comments with the board.
Hi, thank you, sorry. First, I want to say thank you to the board and the superintendent for the comments at the last meeting discussing safety and not being intimidated by certain threats that were out there. Keeping our teachers and our kids safe is obviously, has to be everybody's priority. And obviously, if our teachers and the staff aren't safe, then our kids cannot truly be safe. Excuse me. I have a 5th grader and an 8th grader in the district. My 5th grader is currently sitting maybe two and a half, three feet apart from her classmates. She is in Group A, sharing a desk with Group B classmate. With this scenario, not exactly sure why we are bothering with hybrid, but, you know, I mean, she might as well be in a face-to-face classroom. But honestly, that's for another meeting. What I don't understand is why my middle schooler doesn't have the same right to an education as my elementary school child, or why we just can't get this ball rolling. My son has an IEP and needs to be in front of his teachers just as much as my elementary school child. He's doing okay with virtual learning. He's not, his grades are actually steady, they're just like they would be if he was in school. But okay isn't good enough, and it shouldn't be good enough for our kids. These kids need to be in front of a teacher, a teacher that was trained to teach in a classroom, trained to read cues of understanding, trained to teach kids, all those things that I wasn't trained to do and that parents in general weren't trained to do. Just like with my elementary school child, there are things that kids receive from being in school that you just can't get at home in front of a computer screen, whether it's little nuances, a math question, a procedure, a love of science, exercise in gym, food from the cafeteria, attention from a friend or a teacher. The kids are saying they want to be back. The grades are showing you that they want to be back. Beyond our children's educational issues, we have to consider their emotional state. Since March, my son alone has come to me three times regarding friends who have made what I have found to be credible threats of suicide, where I've had to reach out to parents or police departments to ensure safety of these kids. So I need you to understand what I just said, that in the span of the seven months since our shutdown, three kids have reached out or felt comfortable to tell my son that they were so depressed that they felt like they're taking their own lives. This is the reality of what's going on with our kids right now. We all need to look beyond the virus and look at the kids. It seems like everywhere we go, the question comes up anytime there's kids around from adults. Do you wish you were in school, or do you want to be in school? And over and over, the answer I hear is a resounding yes. I'm just wondering if the school board has actually spoken to these older kids and asked them kind of basically what they want. We have kids in dance, we have kids playing sports, we have kids in scouts, we have kids in other activities. They can do all of these things and more, but they can't be in school and they want to be. It just doesn't make any sense. We're here, or we're not here pleading with you to allow these kids back in school for any reason other than the fact that we believe as their parents that it's in their best interest. Some may not, and, you know, there was potentially that CVVA option. I don't know if it was necessarily presented in the best way, but we're doing this. The ones who are saying we want our kids in school, we're doing this for no other reason than we feel like it's best for our kids. We shouldn't have to beg for what we think is best and for the education that we feel they're entitled to. With, there's one other issue I want to address real quick. I heard a rumor, I hope it truly is only a rumor, but that this board might be considering not opening for secondary school until January.
Ms. Simon, I'm sorry.
The only reason I...
I'm sorry, I just, I want to give that one-minute warning, but please continue.
Yep. The only reason I could see for this being true would possibly be the movement of kids within the CVVA. I would hope that those of us that want to get our kids back in school are not paying the price for a board who potentially lost parents making an impossible decision back in August, September between the Virtual Academy, which we all knew absolutely nothing about, and an unknown option of returning to an unknown way of schooling at an unknown time instead of potentially providing better information or waiting for, even till the present, till we were ready to actually open to make that decision, kind of like Frasier did. Just lastly, I want to end by saying thank you to all the teachers out there. We know that we are asking a lot of you and truly appreciate everything you are doing for our kids, regardless of how we have to proceed. You are doing an amazing job, and we appreciate everything. So that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your comments this evening, Mrs. Simon. Okay, Ms. White, we have another community member out there that would like to speak to the board.
We do. Jenna Shannon is next.
Jenna Shannon, Ms. Shannon, are you out there? Ms. Shannon?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Ms. Shannon, we can hear you loud and clear. If you, please address your comments to the board.
Yes, I am a parent of an International Academy student that is in the 11th grade. And I have a few concerns. One is that North High School did reopen, and I registered for their emails. I don't know if other parents are or not, but they have had five outbreaks of COVID already in their school, which is very concerning. they have had five outbreaks of COVID already, um, in their school, which is very concerning. I am ICU nurse. I see a lot that these parents aren't seeing. I'm not knowing where they're getting their information from. But, um, not just the people that are dying, but the long-term effects that they're having from COVID, um, for heart issues and stuff like that, and it's not just affecting older people. I have twenty-year-olds in my ICU um, that this is affecting. And people that have recovered from it, now they're having these long-term effects. This stuff is not being told in the media. It's not being told in the news. But my daughter sees me come home and cry from this. Um, it's a lot to bear at work. Um, we have four different units that are full of COVID patients right now as Macomb County leads going up in COVID cases. So, I'm not really sure why everyone feels this privilege that they have to have something or that they have to, they're missing something. Like, people's lives are still dying. People are dying every single day from this. And it's, it's not going away. We have to stick together and get this under control. And by going back to school, when North is showing that they're still having COVID cases in there, that we're not ready. And I just don't understand, like, where the information is coming from. It's not being reported on the news anymore. And it's very depressing to see. And for my eleventh grader to have to see me come home and see me in tears for patients that I've lost every single day, she fears for her life going to school. And I, I, I just think that we need to look at, like, really what's going on. This is not something simple. This is a pandemic. Like, hundreds of thousands of people have died from this and continuing to die every single day. And everyone just feels like there, there's something being taken away from them, and it's not something being taken away from them. We're trying to save your lives. We're trying to save your children's lives, your mother's lives, your husband's lives by keeping everyone in the house and keeping them safe. The CDC just made COVID airborne. I don't know if people understand the difference between airborne and droplet. Droplet is something that you can get with your so many feet from people. Airborne is something that you can get from so, so many miles from people. It's, 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 there's a big difference. This stuff is not being reported in the media. And the CDC has changed those guidelines for even how this is transmitted. We still don't even know enough about this disease. How, all this, this treatment that they're saying that we're getting, some of the other callers, that it's working in the hospitals, we don't have a treatment for COVID. There is no treatment for COVID. We are treating your symptoms and hoping that you live. We're hoping that you don't get long-term effects from it. And we're hoping you don't pass it to your family members and come back in. There's no treatment for it. There's no cure for it. So, I just really think that going back to school right now is not a great option. Um, my daughter spends hours and hours of homework on the computer also. She does hours of homework afterward, yet she'd still rather do it this way than put herself, her friends, or her family at risk. So, I, I'm, I'm just not understanding where we're coming from with this or where we're getting the information from. I understand you guys have been on the phone for hours with this now, so I really thank you for taking my call, but I really wanted to stress of really what's happening in these hospitals and what's going on. And I'm sure I'm not the only parent that's working in the hospital that's seeing this and going through this and understands what's really happening. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Shannon, for your comments this evening, and, and thank you for your service as a nurse in our community. I'm sure that, that it's heartbreaking and, uh, um, offering strength and, and, and hope for the best. But thank you again for your comments. All right, um, Ms. White, do you have another community member that wants to address the board?
That is our final community member for this evening.
Okay, we, can we check for these other folks that came on that? Uh, you got a way of looking at the board and seeing if they're there, Mr.?
There is nobody waiting in the lobby at this point.
We have Mr. St. Laurent and, um, Ms. Simmons Wilcox. Didn't get a chance to address us this evening. On no part, no, no fault of our, uh, Diane Alibi.
She, uh, she mentioned in her comments that she couldn't attend in, um, further down, our second-to-last community speaker emailed me that she was going to pass.
Okay, Kimberly.
We don't have anybody waiting at this point.
Okay, um, with that, we will end community comment for this evening. I want to thank again all our community members for sharing their comments with us. Um, it, it's, it's vital that we do hear those comments and, and from the students also. Uh, this evening was, was great, great to hear them come out and how's all they feel. Not great feelings, not great topics, but good to see the interactions with our students and our community. So, thank you again, folks. Okay, we will move on at this time to E1, General Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to pass the General Consent Agenda, please?
I'll move.
Okay, I got...
I'll support.
And supported by Ms. Pyton?
Yes.
Okay, anything the board would like to remove or like to discuss further, uh, from the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, Ms. Cartamon, please?
Ms. Mingzak?
Yes.
Ms. Pyton?
Yes.
Ms. Aquino? Mr. Bednar?
Yes.
Um, Cartamon, yes. Mr. Patzer?
Andy, unmute.
Mr. Sobal?
Yes.
Okay, did we, did we get a vote for Mr. Patzer? No?
We did not.
Okay, let's just note that for the record that, uh, we had six yeses and, uh, Mr. Patzer, uh, wasn't able to participate in that particular vote. Motion will pass. Okay, um, Ms. Cartamon, I believe we have two retirements, uh, this evening?
We do. The resolutions read, "Whereas Kathleen Snyder and Jessica Bear Thomas have served the Chippewa Valley School District faithfully and diligently for a period of thirty-five years and twenty-three years as teachers respectively. Whereas Kathleen Snyder and Jessica Bear Thomas, through their leadership, have had a positive impact on the staff, students, and the community. Whereas Kathleen Snyder and Jessica Bear Thomas, conscientious, loyal, hard-working employees, have elected to retire. And whereas Kathleen Snyder and Jessica Bear Thomas will be missed by all their school colleagues. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District, not only on their behalf, but also that of the Superintendent of Schools and the Administration, extend their thanks and appreciation for a job well done, as well as best wishes for the future. Be it further resolved that this resolution, having been adopted by the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District, on the nineteenth day of October, 2020, be made a permanent part of the records of the school district and a copy sent to Kathleen Snyder and Jessica Bear Thomas as an expression of our appreciation."
Okay, so we can graduate those, uh, retirees, wishing the best in their retirement. We also, again, we're on to wish, um, Ms. Schneider, welcome her to our district. We spoke to her earlier this evening. Okay. All right, we'll move on to, um, F, Old Business. We have none this evening. Um, we do G, New Business. Uh, let's see, we got caught up here. G1, Annual Approved Personnel Transaction Hire of Dietitian-Food Coordinator, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Bednar. Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the appointment of Ms. Amanda Snyder to the position of Dietitian-Food Coordinator. Effective start date is October twenty-sixth, 2020.
So moved. Um, I'll, I'll support that.
Okay, is moved by Ms. Cartamon, supported by Ms. Aquino? Rationale, please.
Ms. Snyder is being appointed to fill a vacancy created by a promotion, and she meets all the qualifications specified in the posting.
Questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, we'll call vote, Ms. Cartamon.
Cartamon, yes. Ms. Aquino?
Yes.
Mr. Bednar?
Yes.
Ms. Mingzak?
Yes.
Mr. Patzer?
Yes.
Ms. Pyton?
Yes.
Mr. Sobal?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to G2, Approved Change Order Summary Report, September twenty-twenty, Mr. Suttlings.
Recommended motions that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the 2018 Bond-Issue Change Order Summary Report for the month of September, 2020.
Motion?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Queenie?
I'll support Trank Sobal.
Supported by Mr. Sobal. Rationale, please.
This report consists of changes to existing contracts for the purpose of owner-requested work, deducts, code compliance, or hidden conditions on the construction and equipment projects. All amounts are within the contingency budget allocation. This report was reviewed with the Building and Site Subcommittee on Monday, October fifth, 2020, and funding will come from the 2018 Building and Site Fund.
Questions or comments by the board? Hearing none, Ms. Cartamon, we'll call vote, please.
Ms. Aquino?
Yes.
Mr. Sobal?
Yes.
Mr. Bednar?
Yes.
Cartamon, yes. Ms. Mingzak?
Yes.
Mr. Patzer?
Yes.
And Ms. Pyton?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, G3, Award Contracts, Bid Pack 2E, Water Bottle Fill Stations, Mr. Suttlings.
Recommended motions that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education award contracts totaling two-hundred-and-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars for water bottle fill stations district-wide to the following contractors.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pyton?
I will support that, Denise.
Moved by Ms. Aquino. Rationale, please.
This project will consist of upgrading existing water fountains and adding water bottle fill stations to buildings around the district. The bids were received, the bids received were reviewed with the Building and Site Subcommittee on Monday, October nineteenth, 2020, and funding will come from the 2018 Building and Site Fund. These projects are scheduled to start in the winter of 2020.
Questions or comments by the board? I think, uh, go ahead, Denise, did you want to say something?
I was just going to say that I'm glad that we're having these, uh, we're installing these in a, um, more aggressively, I don't know, sorry, we're, we're going to, um, push this project forward quicker so that we have, uh, stations within our schools for the kids to be able to get water without, um, going to a drinking fountain. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments by the board? Okay, hearing none, Ms. Cartamon, we'll call vote, please.
Ms. Pyton?
Yes.
Ms. Aquino?
Yes.
Mr. Bednar?
Yes.
Cartamon, yes. Ms. Mingzak?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Patzer?
Yes.
And Mr. Sobal?
Yes.
Motion carries. G4, Adopt New Board Policy 2266, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex in District Programs or Activities, Mr. Roberts.
Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education adopt new board policy 2266, non-discrimination on the basis of sex in district programs or activities, and the reading of the policy be waived.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pyton?
Support.
Moved by Ms. Cartamon. Rationale, please, Mr. Roberts.
Policy 2266 is a mandatory policy that memorializes the key requirements of the new Title IX Regulation that the U.S. Department of Education, Office for Civil Rights, released on May sixth, 2020.
Questions or comments by the board? Hearing none, we'll call vote, Ms. Cartamon.
Ms. Pyton?
Yes.
Cartamon, yes. Ms. Aquino?
Yes.
Mr. Bednar?
Yes.
Ms. Mingzak?
Yes.
Mr. Patzer?
Yes.
Mr. Sobal?
Yes.
The motion passes. Moving on to G5, Approved Return to the Classroom, Grades Six through Twelve, Mr. Roberts.
Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve returning students in grades six to twelve to school for in-person instruction in a hybrid model. The target date for return is Monday, November ninth, 2020.
I'll move, Jill.
I'll support Andy.
Mr. Mingzak, and supported by Mr. Patzer. Rationale, please.
This is part of our commitment for a safe return to school for students if conditions change or return to remote learning is possible.
Okay, questions or comments by the board? Okay, hearing none, um, we'll call Cartamon, please.
Oh, wait a minute. I do have some, I have, do have, I do have a statement that I'd like to make. Uh, during this process, um, I've talked to a lot of parents. I've been approached, um, with concerns both ways. I've listened to the community. And this is a very, very difficult decision for me because I've, I've listed all of the things that I wanted to consider when making this decision. I, um, I based, part of my decision is being based on, let's just say, the data. At this point, we are on the rise and, uh, perhaps it's not transmitted between students, but it still concerns me because we said we were shooting for five percent and we're well above that. So, on that little, on that portion, I would vote no. Um, I was also making considerations based on pleasing the majority of the community. Not pleasing them, but listening to them and trying to represent them. And then, in that area, I would vote yes. The thing that I'm struggling with, with the most is that I think, well, one of the things is that the timing, it, for me, is a, is a concern. Um, because we go back early November, there's only two and a half weeks before Thanksgiving holidays, so they'll have six days of instruction that month. The next month, if they go, you know, when they go back to school, then, then they'll have eight days of instruction. I know that it, the, um, so in that case, I am on the fence with that one. I'm not sure. I know that our staff has said that the, um, the, uh, more can be taught in smaller sizes of, you know, it was less kids, but I have heard from many teachers that they still do not feel that the split, feel the AB split is not always equal, so of the safety precautions. If I was just voting on safety, I would probably vote no. Um, hours of instructions, I'm concerned about that. The social, emotional issues, I would vote yes, of course. And the technology, I'm still concerned about that. I would feel more comfortable once we get our computers in and everybody has one. Um, one of my other concerns that I think about a lot is our at-risk and our ELL students. And, um, I would vote yes because I am very concerned about them, and I don't think, I think they're the portion of our community that we do not hear from, and I am very concerned about them in what their home life is like and, and how much support they're getting. So, I just wanted to let people know how I've considered this and that I don't feel ready to vote in it, but a vote will be given. Go ahead. Thank you for letting me speak.
Well, thank you for your comments tonight. Other board members wish to, uh, comment before we vote on this matter?
I, I, I have some, and in a lot of ways, I agree with many of the things that Ms. Aquino said. Um, I, I think we can all agree that our community is at its wits' end in terms of the pandemic. We want the pandemic to end. End of story. We want, we want life to be normal. Um, but I think where we may diverge at that point is that school will not be normal when we return. And we've, you know, we've heard from both sides a lot. This has created quite a division in our community. Um, and it has hurt my heart in a lot of ways to see how people have treated each other in terms of this disagreement. It also hurts my heart that in terms of safety, our standard seems to be that that the standard for illness is death. And that is really scary to me because in the last week alone, there's been a twenty-five percent increase in cases within schools. And I think it's a false narrative to say that this is, quote, "working" in other districts because it's not. Um, when we talk about Lance Cruz... When we talk about Lance Cruz, nine of their buildings have infections. That's not working. 127 people in quarantine or infected in Romeo is not working. And so, you know, today, three more schools in our county were added. You know, we're approaching a 7% infection rate. When we did talk about that 5%, we've recognized that the CDC, the World Health Organization, and the American Academy of Pediatrics uses 5% as a community infection standard for when it is safe to return to school. And so I feel everyone's frustration and I've heard it. And I've read the numerous Facebook posts and emails that we've received. And I, the one place where I do diverge from Ms. Aquino is where we stand as a community in terms of where people are. So that is all that I have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pyden. Other board members?
Yeah, Frank, Andy. So we're going on a year almost here without kids being in school. The virus is never going to go away totally. Does that mean we never open our schools? The virus is going to be around for years. That's an unfortunate thing, but our kids belong in school. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Patzer. Any other comments by the board?
Mr. Bednar?
Ms. Cartamon, please.
So I want to basically like piggyback on what every other board member has said. I think that the word I keep hearing over and over again is fatigue. And we are very exhausted. We want things to go back to normal. And the fatigue is anxiety, depression, the other things that have been discussed and that we see in our, in our own families and friends. I go back and forth back, even during this meeting, I've been going back and forth in terms of what, you know, my heart is saying to do. And I know that we need to get our community back in. We need to get our children back in the classroom. I thought that our initial plan was to go back gradually. So I'm a little bit disappointed that we're not going from elementary to middle to high school. I think I made that clear in my questioning. And I hope that we're making the right decision and that we don't get everybody, I mean, it's doing it passes, that we don't get everybody excited about coming back and then we end up going back home again. That's my biggest concern is back and forth, back and forth. The inconsistency, I think, will just go beyond fatigue to complete and total despair and exhaustion. So that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Other board members for comments before we vote? I too have struggled with this, just like the rest of the board. And, you know, we just want to do what's right here and what's safest and what's best for our children, and there's no good answer. There's no bad answer. They all stink. Either way, there's not a really good or bad, no matter, every email, and I want to thank again the community for sending you your comments via email. Again, I've read every one, I'm sure the whole board has, because we know the momentum or momentous decision that we're making for so many families in our district here shortly. I was on the fence. Elementary, if you remember back, I felt that there was a lot of lost kids out there who were special ed, five or six-year-olds who couldn't get out of a computer. And with the dynamics as far as younger children not moving around a building, I agree to that, and that seems to be going good so far. I've been on the fence about deciding this. Last week, I was just reading emails and just like the rest of us and going around. My wife got sick. I was quarantined with her. Thank God, she passed out negative on it, but I went into the pharmacy to get her prescriptions for her, which we couldn't get for a day because they were so packed. I talked to the pharmacist there, local neighborhood CVS, and she told me that she's never been this busy in her whole career. That particular day, she never she's almost crazy, she was talking to me about it, which was something. And I was still on the fence with this decision. But the real kicker for me came personally on the last, over the weekend, where my brother caught it and my nephew caught it. And my nephew's currently in the hospital. He had decreasing oxygen rates last I heard. He's 26. My other family member was on a ventilator a week ago. He's off now, thank God. So to me, and just the whole feeling of this community, the whole feeling of what's going on here with this virus, it's moving up. It's moving up. It's 5.8 or 6.6, and we're going in the wrong direction. And we're going to put these kids together, especially in my mind, secondary children. We're going to be teenagers and do what things that teenagers do, like we all did. It's not going to be in their best interest, but they're going to do it, and I'm just afraid that we're going to become a major outbreak, being the fifth largest school district in this state, largest high school in the state of Michigan. And I don't want to take nothing away from administrators. They have worked so diligently and so hard and been so dedicated, and this is not on them. Our administrators want to move this forward. They admit it perfectly clear to us that they need, have this school district, the kids return to school. That's their jobs, and they've done their jobs magnificently. We're not the greatest. We have our deficiencies, but we try as hard as we can, and they have, our teachers and our staff. But I can't support this. I haven't voted yet, but I'm not leaning towards that way. As you can see, it's just too darn personal. I think it's too darn dangerous. I really appreciate the comments by the nurse at the end there who told us like it is. So with that, if there's no further comments, we will have a roll call vote, Ms. Cartamon.
Ms. Mingzak?
Yes.
Mr. Patzer?
Yes.
Ms. Aquino?
I just want to say I am voting, I'm going to vote yes, and the only reason I am is because I know other school districts in the surrounding area are doing it. They're having quarantines. They're struggling, but I think we need to give it a try. Even though I am not sure it's the right decision, but I think I will support our administration in this. And we'll see what happens. I'm afraid that we're going to end up back in remote anyway, and we're going to go back and forth. So I hope the parents are prepared for that, and then they don't come to us and say, oh, why did you do that? Just everybody realize we're all in this together, and if things are, get to be very challenging, we're going to do the best we can.
Good, thank you.
I'm sorry, Denise, what, your vote was yes? Mr. Bednar?
No.
Cartamon, no. Patzer? Oh, wait, sorry. Already got you. Ms. Pyden?
No.
Mr. Sobal?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four to three. It will be returning into hybrid secondary schools as of November 9, 2020. I want to thank the board again for heartfelt comments and work on this and move forward with it, and we're going to hope this is going to work out real well. Again, just be ready. Looks like we could go into a shutdown within the next few weeks. So again, Ron, can we comment to that? Is that a big thing for us to go back into a remote from a hybrid? I know we have preparations going from remote to hybrid because you have to get the schools ready, but as far as.
No, I mean, we've done it, so teachers have worked on it. We have additional computers coming in, so we'll be prepared. Any shift, it does take effort. I think the bigger shift right now is going to the classroom because in some ways, you're, I don't want to say starting again, but many elements are like starting again. The remote, we've done, so if we move back to remote, we should be able to do that.
Okay, great. Great, thank you again, just for the community out there. Vote was four to three to go ahead and move the secondary into hybrid. That will begin on November 9, so, okay, very good. Thank you again. At this time, I'd like to dismiss Ms. Mingzak. She has a prior obligation this evening at shortly, and she needs to be dismissed from the meeting, so thank you. Thanks, Jill, and good luck. We'll speak to you soon. Okay, moving on to H, Union Communication. If you have any community union leadership out there, like to address the board this evening? Okay, moving on to I, Administration Reports, Mr. Roberts.
We have no additional administration or curriculum updates this evening.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay, up and by the board? Everybody's kind of expressed themselves this evening already, so, okay. At this time then, we are going to move to L, Executive Session, Attorney Client Privilege. For the community, we'll be going in a closed session at this time, so we'll be coming back out to adjourn our meeting for the evening. So I want to thank you again for joining us this evening. It's been hard decisions made, but the board has spoke, and we will move forward with the hybrid plan for secondary. So have a great evening, and our next board meeting will be on November 2, so we'll get an update at that time, see how things are going. Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to go into Executive Session, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Cartamon, supported by Ms. Pyden. Roll call vote, Ms. Cartamon, please.
Cartamon, yes. Pyden?
Yes.
Ms. Aquino?
Yes.
Mr. Bednar?
Yes.
Ms. Mingzak is excused. Mr. Patzer?
Yes.
Mr. Sobal?
Yes.
To Executive Session, we're going to take about a five-minute bio break, I guess you want to call it, so we'll go into Executive Session beginning at 9:55, 955, so.
Frank, can I just say one thing? I couldn't get myself off of mute. I just wanted to say if things go dramatically downhill in the next two weeks, I think on our November 2 meeting, we should revisit this in terms of the safety and what our protocols are going to be, and if we feel like we're still going in the right direction.
I agree, and I think Mr. Roberts has said to us that we will constantly look at the data and decide what's, what we think is safe or not safe, so absolutely.
Yeah, that's the only reason I voted yes is because I feel that we have to constantly look at this, and I'm willing to make changes as we go because I'm very concerned about the, about the safety of the students and the staff.
Okay, okay, thank you, Denise. All right, we will take that bio break, and again, 9:55, five minutes, we will reconvene for our closed session and Executive Session, Attorney Client Privilege. Thank you.